Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Greenwood City Council meeting on this Monday, June the fifth, twenty twenty-three, approximately seven oh eight P. M. Ms. Terry, would you call the row, please?
Yes, Kathy Brown.
Here.
Ralph Baker.
Here.
Tim Terry.
Here.
Robert Rainwater.
Here.
Dan McDaniel.
Here.
Rod Powell's absent, but we need to have a court.
Thank you very much. If everyone would please stand. I'm reluctantly allowing TCU co-wearing brother Ronnie Neal to lead us in prayer this evening. You can tell him why you're wearing it.
No, no, no.
And all of our pledge of allegiance by our chairman of the Parks Commission, Mr. Joe Gilson.
Attention, to our allegiance. The United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I pray, I'd just like for you to remember the family of Ken Hamilton. Ken passed away at six o'clock this evening, and this town lost a great man. Kim loved Greenwood, grew up here, was involved in lots of different things. And so we just remember this family tonight. It's just a tough time. Let's pray. Lord, I thank you for just being able to pray to come before you and just lift our requests up to you. To be able to pray for a family that's hurting right now, and I know there's so many others in this community that struggle and have needs, but, Lord, specifically, we pray for. For Ken's wife, his three daughters, his families. Lord, just many people in this community that have been impacted by Ken's life. So, Lord, we just lift them up, just give them comfort and peace. Lord, I thank you for the leadership in this community. Thank you for their service, for their dedication, for the commitment that they give to this community. Lord, we just ask you to guide them, lead them, pray for. Lord, our community as a whole, that, God, we will be united, and we'll be committed to one another. And so, Lord, we ask your blessings upon Greenwood and the surrounding area. We pray for this meeting that's about to take place. We ask your blessings on it, or guidance and wisdom, direction and decisions and things that will be discussed. We pray this in Jesus' name. I was not aware of that news until just this moment. Mr. Hamilton was here several times in the last few months in the regard, and he's on behalf of trying to get the library placed out on the highway. Mr. Hamilton, when he did anything, he was very passionate about it, and that was one of his back later latest passions, if you will. I know fellowship Christian athletes, huge in his life, so, yeah, it's what I said, keep that family prayer. Okay, we'll move on. Let's see, we've already done that. So if the council would consider considering approving the minutes for the May first, twenty twenty-three regularity council meeting. They have motion, second?
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Ralph Baker.
Yes.
Tim Terry.
Yes.
Robert Rainwater.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is recognitions and acknowledgements, and I would like for this beautiful young basketball team to come up here and...
What?
No. Obviously exclusion coach. No. Team and coach, please, to come up front alive, not everybody. I did start them. Beauty is in the eye of the bull, right, Coach?
I did, yes.
I've heard that all my life, I don't know what that means. So, is anybody here not aware of what these young ladies and this young man and that coach have accomplished this year? Do you not know? Come on, it's okay, you can raise your hand. I am going to say shame on you. Come on in, Rod. Okay? Okay. So, they've accomplished a big deal, and they've done it a few times, I think. How many times have you done that?
Our team.
Yes, sir.
Seven years at Greenwood.
Seven years. Wow. Everybody say wow. I'm going to read a proclamation that was prepared on this Charlotte area, and I think it's very appropriate. This is a proclamation on behalf of the people of Greenwood, the city of Greenwood, by his honor, yada, yada. The Greenwood Lady Bulldogs, to publicly recognize you ladies. Whereas the Greenwood Lady Bulldogs basketball team has engaged in competition at the state at five A level at Bank OCK, I always do that wrong. Arena in Hot Springs in the year twenty twenty-three, and emerged a victor in that class to represent among the best our great state has to offer. And whereas our Lady Bulldogs played their way to victory with the team winning, not only top honors for this five A state title, but captured their seventh, says right there. Thank you, Coach, I was checking you. Overall in program history and all, and all since twenty-ten under head coach Clay Reeves. For this and for this, they have placed Greenwood, Arkansas into a special category indeed. And whereas these victories represent not only wins, but life lessons, teaching these young ladies what hard work, sacrifice, and determination can attain, and we applaud them now, extend an awe of the quality of life each contribute when coming together for a common goal. And whereas these accomplishments displayed the essence of teamwork, great coaching, and winning tradition, and this historical event will be treasured greatly by the community. And now, therefore, I declare Ken's lone mayor of Greenwood, Arkansas, to hereby proclaim Monday, June the fifth, twenty twenty-three, to be Greenwood Lady Bulldog State Champs Day. You have your own day. And night. I've got one excited, one excited player. A day to recognize this team for all that it has done for the notoriety of the community and the city of Greenwood, given under my hand and affixed with a seal of the great city of Arkansas this special day of June, with my signature in Charlotte area. So that is amazing, I can clap. Danielle, would you do me a big favor? Would you give these girls? Mrs. Olafell, then, from back in Greenwood, a place that feels like home. We changed the model a few years ago when I came in office. We were years ago, I say, who's older than I am? I can't. Nobody in particular, but we used to be a good place to live, a good place to live. That was good, right? And then we became a great place to live, and then I came in and we thought, you know, let's change it up a little bit. So we became a, or feels like home, Greenwood feels like home. And I think it's true. Somebody had to be smart with me one day, said, where do you live? I said Greenwood, and they said, well, that's why it feels like home. That's not why it feels like home. It feels like home because of things like this and what you accomplish. It's not all about the trophy, although as we agreed, it was all the other. But it's about what you do together as a team, and I don't even hurt this. I got to ask a question, I knew this is off cut. Did you have a slogan or a word or something that kept your girls going, Coach? You got to remember it, you did. Certain thing.
Win harder.
Win harder.
That would probably slip down. But it worked, so.
It worked. Hey, it got you here.
Just put again on the end of it.
Oh, okay, it's got you. Win harder, again.
He was screaming at it.
This is good stuff. So what would you like to say, like?
He's a great man.
I would love to take an hour or so to let everybody talk about that. I think it'd be more interesting than what's on the agenda, probably. But thank you, ladies and gentlemen, I'm sorry it was delayed, it's all Coach Paul Nelson. It's ten terrible. But thank you, thank you for coming. Is this everybody?
This is all about half the...
I was going to say, I saw it, anyway, too, this is not everybody, so are the polls aren't here, I'm joking, there are no polls, right? And what poll is? Non, non, that's forgiven. Talk too much. So just to be clear, I give out a lot of these, I kind of say the same thing every time, but I do mean it every time I say it. This is, this is not from me, it's from the city, meaning almost ten thousand people, we got close, but we're almost ten thousand people strong, and this is from the hearts of all those people. You guys have represented yourselves and this community so well, and I brought you to court. You didn't just win, you did it gracefully, is the best word I can say, and you're awesome. So thank you so much, got to let you, congratulations. Oh. One more thing I would say. Sir? Thank you. They know the routine. That does not fit anything in this building, so you cannot, you know. The chief of police is here. In the past, I've given that out and said, because of the day, it's your day. I'm glad, let's just even say it. So typically, just for fun, I say, you now have the ability, in my blessing, to drive to the city of Greenwood as fast as you want to around the sweater. But I'm pulling that back a little bit because I feel Coach Reeves staring at me and maybe appearing or two in the audience, so we won't do that. But thank you so much, we're proud of you, and hopefully you're proud to be a part of Greenwood, as we are proud of you. So thank you so much, and congratulations. I knew it was Mr. Terry, you're like the voice of the Bulldog, the last week.
Well, Doug, I just, Mayor, I want to tell you that I'll give you information back about this, but it was Coach Reeves' tenth state title as head coach, he won four in a previous stop. And so that's the most of anybody in the state of Arkansas in girl festivals, so we...
Doesn't make a proclamation. Let's get a picture. Can you get us all? All right, one, two, here we go. We'll do that in a second. They go ahead and picture me before? Ma'am? Do you know what they do?
No. Does that mean they get their day off at work?
Do what?
Does that mean they get their day off?
I don't know what you're doing. I just want to be a part of this.
Lady Bulldog, one, two, three, Lady Bulldog.
Okay, ready? One, two, three, Lady Bulldog. One, two, three. Tim, you have to stay for the whole. I forgot to mention that. All right. That's what makes Greenwood great.
Back and forth.
Back and forth. Thank you for staying. All right, committee reports, we have Mr. Kenny here, and we'd like to... Who are we doing, our colleague Jeff?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
They can't stay here, actually.
You like it back in the room?
That's fine. Sure, yeah.
I feel good back there.
Mayor Charlotte, City Council, Mr. Ravis. We're finishing up just a great, great baseball softball season. In fact, I can't tell you how many people were out there. We did a little video, if you can pull it up on your tablets and see, the amount of people there and the amount of cars there, two and a half times every night. That's just a five thirty games, and a six thirty seven. So you see how many people in Greenwood this is impacting. Ms. Baker actually did, or her husband did the drumming and did a great job. Our after-school program, we just ended, huge success. We're able to offer more scholarships coming in this next year because we've had so many calls, so we're excited about that. So overall, with all our sports that we've had this year, from August till now, we almost had nineteen hundred and fifty kids, it was like nineteen forty total kids that participated. And if you add after-school, then we're over two thousand kids out there. So we're very, very excited. I talked to y'all about the lights. Tim, you gave me Holland's number and everything, I gave you a proposal. We went back with Dane, and basically it's going to save us about eight thousand if they're able to pitch in with the labor. He says probably not going to be any money they can do, but they could probably give us some help in installing it. And that's going to save us about eight thousand out of that twenty twenty-two. So, you know, to get all that, that you asked us to do. So have y'all seen the video? You seen the sidewalks, everything, the drainage and everything? Push play.
Now it's got music.
It has music, this is going to be fun. You shouldn't say it, I turned it around.
By the way, Kings, we're LSU purple.
Uh, yeah.
Yes, I am, yeah.
Not to be confused with TCU.
No.
We're just...
We were to beat them.
They're actually more of a region, right?
Yeah.
I mean, super region.
Yeah, you can see, really see all the improvements from that parking lot, the sidewalks, the red dirt, bleachers out there.
It's really good, though.
Well, if we ever hit that system, it's way more nice.
But I thought it would be nice for y'all to see what we've done out there. And if you can see that, Doug, you probably played on Field Nine, we got to use that for a parking lot. We'll have about a hundred and fifty cars by six thirty, six forty on that.
Up on nine?
Just on that field.
See your red, your red dirt?
Yes, looks good.
Is that back lot taped, or is that just grabbed down right now?
No, that, we took, we got from the county all of the shavings that came off. So we were able, and it used to be on the road to get back there, you could only go pretty much one car.
Right.
It's widened up, now we've got two-way traffic.
And I would venture to say, I don't know for sure, because the county got some and other folks got some, is the shavings from this...
From Tim, yeah, correct, yeah.
All states here.
Yeah, sorry, we need to widen that back parking lot a little bit more. Again, our numbers are just keep going up and up and up. So I was shocked that it wouldn't hold everybody this year. Last Thursday night, we sat there and they counted and everything, and we were right at twenty-two hundred people walked through those gates, county kids, coaches, and everything. So I mean, it was... And it takes, if you're on that back parking lot, after that five thirty game, it's twenty minutes to get out, out of there. We probably next year have to get the police out there to stop traffic, to move them out a little faster.
And I can only imagine, no one rests about that, right?
Not this year, they're so excited about the improvements in the bathrooms, and I wish I, so, I think probably would have got rest if we blew a drone in the bathroom. But, you know, to have that, because it's, it's something in there.
Have y'all discussed another exit down the bottom that we discussed before?
Yeah, we tried it. It's nothing. It's nothing. We can't get it right away. Now, once, hopefully, the gentleman cleared it off, you could see it sort of in the video where the gentleman cleared the property off by the gas well. If they can fix that road up, maybe, then that'd give us a way out to seventy-one. There used to be a road there, and then we actually asked the gas people to close it because when the cops were chasing people, they would pull in there, and then they would go behind there and do drug deals by the gas. So, you know, we asked them to lock that off, you know, but times are different, people all do that.
It's the city's role with the... You're right. What's the city's role, the whole park out there? I'm asking blanky questions, so if you start hard on it, they may not get it filled up.
Okay, refresh my memory, council, but Rod was instrumental on it, well, everybody, well, not everybody, but so...
I'm just saying.
What we can do?
On to Hester.
So we did it.
Yeah. Only us, only us on Hester Cut, where my understanding is it is annexed, you know? Everybody else is still county.
That's correct. Just, just boys and girls love property.
Yes.
So there is actually a thin strip between, and this is not down there where he uses it, but there's a thin strip of property between your, his family and Hester.
Yeah, that's actually a people crawl.
Yeah, that's where they own the big house.
Correct.
Right, and so, you know, and I was thinking, as you were, and I'd have to go look, and you already know, probably, probably would not be beneficial, or could be, I suppose, if you somehow got traffic from back there behind your four legs.
Right. Well, we tried, we tried where they had the right way with the gas line.
Yeah, yeah.
And the people who own that property, she just doesn't want to do it.
Even that strip?
Right, where the gas, but where you're talking about, they would let us do that, but the problem is, is that we got to run over a beautiful subject system to get there.
Which I like to, yes, sir.
Yeah, I love the bulldozing.
So there is, that was my, so, but I know where that line, where that subject is, obviously.
Right, right behind Field One, yeah.
So you can't even go behind it and miss it and come up?
And go.
And get on that property, no?
And there's nothing with the new fire department property, the city property?
Well, I mean, off to Hester Cut is the easiest...
That's the, that's the easiest way to do it, I think. Where you're, I don't know if you could put another entrance or exit, an entrance on seventy-one.
No, you're talking about using it on outside.
Oh, going around.
We touched, we touched his property, sir?
Yep. Behind Field Nine.
So that could be an option.
Behind Field Nine.
You could probably come across here and then exit on the side with the fire department property. No, there's less than ten, there's about ten people. There might be enough room for a fire lane, we were just looking at that the other day. Well, there are, there's not enough room for a problem.
It'd be, it'd have to be one way.
Yeah, that's going to be where we're turning in.
That's what you wanted to say, yeah.
Yeah, we just want, you know, one way out. Because it is, and I mean, sometimes it takes thirty minutes to get out. I mean, it's just, it's just a lot of people.
Fire department happens, is your subject system to a light, and that property can be utilized for...
You're talking about, yes, sir. Insinuation. I agree, I, I, listen, I was, when I was there, we wanted to, too, and that was, that long ago.
I've been there for twenty years.
Twenty years ago.
Well, the whole, with the fire department being there, and we have to do, kind of prompt it in the east side, needs a voting with the fire department. And then we get it all taken care of.
I totally agree, yeah. So all you need is for us to fill a fire station.
Those most problematic ones, we'll, we're just put it on to...
Up to the center.
Yeah, it's very strange.
And what, anything with that property?
And your neighbor, his name, the rental. He has nothing available where you can...
No, they are.
All the way down, he covered everything.
Yeah, he's got everything, yeah, they have to use that one. But it is...
I'm sorry, I was just going to say that might very well be an option when we get down the road.
Right.
Part of fun, to get to over there, and then where you can do away with that lovely...
I think it may be possible, the entrance in the fire department, between Cam and the city property for the fire department, that a collector road would be built right in there to the back and tie in and give them ingress and not affect the fire department. Fire department's come out from, it's three and a half acres.
It was certainly discussed, that road.
They're not three and a half acres?
There's three and a half acres, and then the one and a half there, there's about five acres there. We've already been in discussions with architects abusing it all. I had to change some designs, so. The training facilities won't be there.
That's where our after-school.
So we, as you can see in the video, and you've seen the pictures that we've done, out on the ball fields with the bathrooms and the concession and everything, now, the last thing, the biggest thing that we need to get done there is lights, where we can start throwing tournament, at the tournament. We have the fields ready, we have the bathrooms ready, we have everything, it's just that the big chunk is what's, what's holding it up and everything. So. Is anybody having a question?
Tom's not here, Matt, this would be the night to give that money.
Right?
That's a joke.
So we can, you giving us permission?
No, I'm not.
Is what I've heard.
That was a joke. I can give you all permission, I can. It wouldn't have.
But, yeah.
I think the council's certainly trying to figure out something.
I guess this is not order a little bit, but could we add a discussion about audio on our...
You can, yes. And actually, there's eleven already, so it's mark twelve, and I'll tell you what that was when I was here.
All right, good, now. Y'all have any other questions for me? Well, thank y'all very, very much.
Thanks, Kenny. Again, thank you for what you do. So if I may, Kenny invited me out a few weeks ago to speak to the kids at the after-school program, and I said, what do you want me to talk about? And he said, well, they're all betting on what not betting, but they're all wondering what costume, so I fooled them, I went out with just me, no costume. And so these kids range from age...
Five to... Twelve.
Five to twelve.
Yeah.
And so I thought we'll just talk, and I told them about the splash pad and all the fun stuff I could think of. And then I got questions like, Danielle, help me, cost of living.
Higher paying jobs.
I said, what would you like to change in Greenwood? Higher paying jobs, the cost of living issues.
Fuel costs.
Fuel costs.
Groceries.
Groceries. These are five to twelve-year-olds. And I looked at Kenny and I said, you, Coach, and he goes, no, you can tell what their, what their parents are watching, talking about at the dinner table, and they were serious. We had some fun, had fun with them, and then I've got to tell you this, after I got through, after embarrassing myself because I had no answers to any of that, is a young man walked over to me and shook my hand and said, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank you for making Greenwood better. I believe it was a paraphrase. And I just looked at him and I said, again, you coached this kid. And it was Mr. City Attorney's son, who was a, who was a mini you, sir, all GQ and very, it was, it was pretty awesome, but I felt, I left feeling pretty, pretty cool.
They did, they asked questions that were, that were just, I couldn't believe they were asking those questions, I mean, they were just...
Yeah, it was pretty intense. And some of the things they wanted, as you've probably heard a bit of times, is I have Chick-fil-A was a high on their list, lots of different pizza places, I said, yeah, we need another one of those, not to be sarcastic.
Water park?
A water park, not just a splash bar.
And then lakes, too, like they didn't know where we had a couple.
Lake, yeah, they wanted a lake, and I said, bingo, we got that, anything else? But it was very entertaining, I appreciate it.
We appreciate you.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, did you add that to everybody, number twelve?
Yeah.
Eleven is drum roll.
Heights of City Rights of Wayne.
Yes. We had a discussion this morning, our department had a meeting about getting Tim really, really cleaned up and nice, like the state didn't use to do, and we're going to do it, but also understanding what is, what is responsible to the property owners, and where we don't have to do it, so that's number one. Yes, sir. Okay.
I have proposed a minute to construct a discussion for private level lessons.
Very good. Number thirteen?
Number thirteen.
Okay. All right, we'll move on. S R C A is not here, I know Laura, or she called, she's not here. You have any questions, let us know. Parks Commission, Mr. Goldstein is here.
Any questions, they got the practice reports.
Right. So if you got anything other than that, Water Waste Water Commission, I don't see Teresa here. I will tell you, on that note, on that subject, Mrs. Teresa, myself.
Tim Posey, Jeff Falls. Jeff Falls.
Jeff, the new director at the Jamesport, had a little meeting this morning, basically to have a little discussion about the time, timing of us taking over those fifty-two years officially. And before I even got in there, and I was not late, but before I even got in there at nine o'clock, they kind of had it settled, as to who was going to do what and when they were going to do it. Both parties agreed that it's not going to happen overnight, and both parties agreed to make it a smooth transition for the customers as we possibly can. There's some things to do. Tim, as you know, is very, dots his eyes across his teeth kind of guy. his eyes across the seats kind of guy, and evidently so is Mr. Jeff out of James Fork, so, that's all gonna happen, but it very well could be six months or more before they get everything transitioned over, and James Fork is more than willing to keep billing as they are now until we get that changed over. That make sense?
Is there any repair work that may be needed to be done, that needs to be done before we take over?
So I said, rather tongue in cheek, but I meant it to see what would be the response. I said, and by the way, if there's any lease or new pipe, that'd be great if you go ahead and get that done, uh, they didn't really address that too much with me, but I would, I would hope that, we'll, we'll have further discussions with them, there's no, you know, we didn't, we're not making them, or we don't have anything to say they have to per contract or anything, but I certainly hope there's some nice discussion and we work together, uh, to make sure that we're not getting really bad for that stuff, and I don't think we are, I mean, it's age, we know that for sure, they do not have, uh, the radial read on their meters or the lobby pool, that'll be on us, so, but I'm, I'm relying on, I mean, it was a good meeting, I'm relying on, and, and also Donna, who's there in James Fork, so I think they're all gonna, we're all gonna work together, Teresa was very helpful and saying, hey, let's all work together, make this good for all of us, so, I think, I think it's in the works. Very good. Parks Commission, oh, are you, that, Waterways Water Citizen Forum, we have one young lady who signed up this evening, and I'm not gonna try again because I messed it up the last time, but it is Mrs. Chavez, or Chavez.
Mideya.
Mideya, no candidate. I'm gonna try, what?
Mideya.
Mideya? Look at me.
Mideya.
You're up now. And if you would, for the record, just give us your name again.
Okay.
And your address and what you'd like to talk to the council about.
Hi there, I'm Swannanalejomel, my name is Mideya Chavez, and I'm a member of Greenwood. My address is two oh five, I've been here for several years, I was here last meeting, I don't know if somebody over here, don't remember, I talked about getting a CD, a permit license for law piece stuff, so I'm here in here for that, see where we at, they said we were gonna have maybe an answer by this meeting, so I'm hoping we do.
Oh, yeah. I, I, so what happened this evening, right before, I don't know if you heard, Mr. Powell has put the topic on the agenda, and we did not actually have it on there until now, so it is on the agenda for number, well, number thirteen, so there's some things to go through before we get there, but they are one of the, you put on there for discussion.
If, I'd like to tell you, amendment to a current ordinance, it would take three months.
Yes, sir.
And so you're in the August, September range?
Yes, sir.
You, I, you know, I kind of know where you're at, so you currently don't meet the current ordinance.
Okay.
So if this is something you were wanting to do next week, whatever, if you don't qualify, and there's a, you know, you'll pick up a sheet from the city clerk, and you'll go through it with the planning department, make sure you meet all this.
She's already got it, she's done.
But, I do want to have to say, uh, those items that I needed filled in are still not filled in with something.
Did you look on the other page?
I looked all through.
All through.
She's done quite a bit of work to that, on, on her.
There, there's something to say, she, she's done that, but we're working through that.
What's the fifty dollar check there, I see?
It's for the planning, for the variance, you go before the planning permission, you get a variance on the distance.
Now, it does, does it go up front later?
That's what it says here, planning department, planning permission.
Does planning department. Things like this, I'm not for passing them to emergency clauses and suspending rules, you know, things need to be done in the light of day, don't need to seem like they're pushed under the table and done real quick.
Yes, sir.
And so I don't see an emergency in it, what, what I'm proposing to do, and I'm, I'll have a discussion on thirteen, you're welcome, sit around, it's just gonna begin.
Yes, my problem?
I, I won't, again, things need to be done in the light of day, doesn't look like something big has been slid under the table, and so it's, it is a three month process to amend the current ordinance.
Yes, sir, we're willing to wait on that, like I said, I just, I don't want y'all to feel like I just came once to let y'all know what we want to do, I want y'all to see that we want to take it serious, you know, like I said, I love Greenwood, we all love Greenwood, and we wanted to just make Greenwood even better, why not? Why take it on the summer and we can leave it here?
I, I have some things I'm interested in doing that I haven't, I'm gonna wait till, till thirteen, but I haven't got good answers back on them, so it may take longer than three months.
We're willing to wait for that, my problem?
Do you have any more?
No, we're not gonna be more, we love Greenwood, so we're gonna be here as long as we can.
I'm looking at this thing here, this application process and permit, application for a permit required as such, shall be writing in a form prescribed by the city, shall be submitted to the city clerk treasurer company by fifteen hundred dollars fee and a copy of the applicant proposed state permit application.
Like, that guy that reached seven hundred and fifty dollars?
Yes.
Was, I guess after July?
Yeah, he said after July or do something like that, it was only half a month, but we said we'd have to probably pay the full amount.
But I'm gonna have to get this back to you because they're not all so valid.
Just underline whatever we need.
Yes, it.
We've been talking to the guy who's been kind of directing us on that, so give us more of whatever's missing, then I can call him and let him know.
The, the process, I don't plan to mess with it, I don't plan to mess with the process, so I don't think you're wasting your time going through the process, it's, it's more distance and restriction of fees, uh, I'll talk about it at thirteen.
Okay.
I do have a question for you, and we get to talk pretty often because I'm pretty mad about going to law fest pretty often, but, uh, have you contacted the state, or have you talked to the, the ABC board? I mean, I know you've done this.
Yes, uh, there's some classes that we are gonna need to take for that.
Okay.
And it ha, it has a date on it, is that I, that you, yeah.
Oh, okay, cool, so they, so they walk you through everything?
Yes.
I remember, I, I used to be in the restaurant business a hundred years ago, and we were in Fort Smith, so it wasn't an issue about this, you just.
Yeah, everything is just like.
It's a little different.
Yes.
Yeah, but I was just curious if you initiated that contact, obviously.
Yes, so, yeah.
They have that class two of them every month, it looks like, or one of them, I guess.
Have, have they discussed with you the difference, or more difficulties, or whatever, of being in a dry county, attempting this and that opposed to being in Fort Smith?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So city clerk, so I have, says fifteen hundred dollars, I don't see seven fifty anywhere in.
At the top of the application, it says annual permit renewal cost of fifteen hundred dollars, initial permit, if applied for by July first, seven hundred and fifty dollars. After Sep, after July, it's fifteen hundred, so that you get your whole year's fifteen hundred.
I think that's fifteen hundred is just the application.
Seven hundred for application.
Application process.
But you're getting a half, you're only talking about six months, so that's why it's half, six months worth of the permit, renewal.
Section four A is up necessarily, up.
We built this application when we did all of this, so.
I don't have it.
I don't know.
It's, it's in there.
Well, here's what I would say, and I don't know if you're asking for this, I'm trying to be mean or something, but I don't think.
Yeah, it's in section twelve.
She has said that the full cost is not an issue, if they're willing to pay the seven fifty, if it's legal to do that, then apply for the permit. Yeah, they're gonna turn around in January, or whenever, right, and pay fifteen hundred dollars.
Right.
You're not, again, you're not.
It's thirty, because it doesn't say seven fifty anywhere. Uh, if you would, I'll start with them, okay?
Thank you for, you wanna hang around?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, financial report, we're gonna shave about an hour and a half off, Tom's not here, it's not to be recorded, Tom is not here, he's on vacation in Chicago with his wife to do a, she's doing a quiz vote, so I take that real serious, which is very good, so, agenda additions, we have, as we've mentioned, eleven is the right of way, twelve, and I didn't write that one down.
A lot of you guys see.
Thank you, and then thirteen will be the private club discussion. Old Fish, Old Fish Business, Animal Control, how about, she would be here to say, we didn't tell us yet, but it's the same thing that we've been looking at, it's the third reading, rebuilding and replacing ordinance, one is two dash one for animal control ordinance.
Then y'all have the kennel bill in there?
Yes.
Yes, she wrote it to you today, sixty thousand. And that goes for a plus. I mean, that's the, could not keep it on.
I think we're, we're on that, that's a little off topic, but, uh, on your budget for animal control, like percentage of the budget that we've spent.
It's probably a hundred.
Oh, your force?
Yeah, I have none here.
He said, he said a month ago, we were at sixty percent, I think.
Or more than that.
Yeah, it was a lot.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, yeah, that's a good point, you're, you're gonna run out of money.
We are, we are, we'll have to come through.
That percentage is in, I don't know.
I don't suppose you, that's a good point, you're right. I guess you could. You're even with us. We'll pay the girl work. Oh, no, I think, I think more what they're asking about is the kennel.
The animal.
That's a good, a whole lot of tax dollars.
No, I, I totally agree, but if we have to, you know, use that term, we would come back to you.
Right.
Okay, but no, we, she, we gotta pay her, and by the way, I'll just say, and she's not here, I'm not trying to impress her, she's done a good job, she's, uh, very, uh.
Compassionate?
Yeah, and compassionate and passionate, so all, all in the same, and this is a new world, not new world for her, because we got her from Fort Smith, but she, she's done a good job, and she's very overwhelmed, to say the least, uh, so I want to discuss that with you a later date, about the possibility of splitting that job from not just, you know, code.
Hundred percent.
Code over here, animal control here, that's for later, I'm not prepared to do that. Uh, there's a lot going on, so, but anyway, how much?
Hundred percent, point thirty-one.
Oh, well, there you go, we're already there. So, she knows, not necessarily that number, but she knows, because I tell her, and Danielle has told her, that we've got to try to do things different and still be legal, all about it, so she's working on that, too.
NY non-ordinance passed.
NY non-ordinance passed, so she can make everything that's out there, or that's written down, so she can do it, so. I don't, nothing has changed since the first reading.
No, no, it's just doing that.
Mayor, make sure we put this on the third reading, I thought.
Second, motion second?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Speaker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Greenwater?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
And ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance twenty-two dash zero one and all other ordinances in conflict therewith, Alcaraz and regulating, keeping control of companion domestic animals, creatures in the city of Greenwood.
All right, thank you, number two, under Old Fish Business, also animal control ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance, uh, number five oh two, prohibiting unnecessary noise on the third reading.
And that was just making them both the same times?
Yes.
That was the only deal.
And it's not changed either since?
No, uh, ten, ten AM to six AM, I believe.
Yep.
Yeah, definitely.
Can you introduce the citation in this case? Please pardon? We're all, we're still working on that, and we're not, I say that because we don't, we're not clear, we're not perfectly clear, and it's gonna stop me, Danielle, if you do the one.
If anyone's out from ten to six AM.
Well, there, there's that, yeah.
We got all photographs.
So, sir?
We got all photographs.
Possibly, old school, uh, so you're asking about the noises specifically, well, I guess it's utilization twelve, you know, it says about citations, okay, right now, it's still, it's still a police, as far as that goes, right, chief?
Yes, sir.
Cal does not have any authority, I guess, yet to do that, we're, we're kind of, the only end of that, figure out how, how to make that work, so.
The city can designate, or the mayor can designate code enforcement officer.
Who can't do that? Okay, I thought that's what we read for.
I mean, she's been writing tickets for animal issues.
Right.
The hard thing with the code was, is that you have, she has to get their driver's license to scan it in order to issue a ticket, correct? And that's kind of hard when you're go, you're sending letters or going to their door saying, hey, they're, keep, keep your music down or clean up your yard, they're not gonna be like, okay, here's my driver's license, give me a ticket, you know, so that's why she, tickets haven't been wrote for code enforcement issues, although we, she is the, um, biggest letter writer I've ever seen in my life, uh, she is all about sending out those letters, um, so she is staying top, and of course, right now, she is busy because it's grass time, um, but she is, she has her own system, and she stays on those letters, trying to get everybody to care of.
For instance, Mr. Sean, I don't think you might be, who's his name, got a letter regarding his property down here, across from Old Keith Glass and behind the traplex, he didn't write at all, I found out different, and that's fine, that's, you know, that's not a yard, obviously, it would be something to typically be concerned about, she sees high grass, and high grass to Cal is only about those dogs, because she's, she's done it.
Um, is, uh, is there any other way, the, I mean, you know, citation, I can see where, you know, with the traffic citation, you have a driver out there should have a driver's license, probably their owner person and stuff, I mean, when it comes to like, sound issues or, or property issues, I mean, is there any, do you just, other than driver's licenses, I think, you know, property ownership, or, you know, that's, you know, as recorded and be able to.
We could get a lien on their property after it goes so far.
I mean, if you lien on the property, it seems like you just be able to, just have that same name access a citation.
And, and the mayor, the mayor, sorry, that was bad for him, the judge in Schwager has stated more than once over a few years, that if you get into court, I'll take care of it.
But that's been bothering you, getting a citation?
Yeah, well, I, I think, in my opinion, for what it's worth, giving somebody a citation for something like this is gonna, they're gonna have to go to court, to get them to pay for it, you know what I mean, I mean, that's just my personal opinion on somebody that gets something into the mail, uh, even if we can get it to them, is that what you're asking?
Well, I guess that's what a citation, you know, you give a citation, you know, then they.
Appearance.
Yeah, they appear in court, you know, or, or.
I don't know that the citation necessarily is an appearance of court yet, yet, is it, I'm, I'm kind of just like learning this as we go, because it's, we've not been this, um, what's the word?
Citation gives a court date.
Gives a court date, okay.
They can come to the first court date on the citation.
Okay.
And plead, uh.
Can you mail?
Guilty, not guilty, or no contest.
Okay.
They plead, no contest or guilty, they pay, it's over, if they plead not guilty, then they go on the trial, doctor, kind of, obviously.
They could pay the fine and not.
Correct. Well.
True. Basically, plea.
Is, is it legal to just mail a citation, or do we have to hand it to them, get their driver's license?
Could you not just, could you either summon instead of the citation?
Well, it's, it's the same, he says, am I right? Prevent or not.
Summon, I could summon somebody. Summon, just, just letting somebody know that a license will come against them, and that's usually in a civil context. I, I think the citation would be the easiest way to, chief can correct me if I'm wrong. I mean, just a handwritten citation's the easiest, quickest way to get them, uh, in front of court, how to fact.
But can you just mail it, or do you have to have your, so that's, that's the key.
It has to be served.
Served it, driver's license. Which Cal and I talked about, which is doubling up, I suppose, I mean, I don't like her, the idea of her truly, to be honest, but not because she's a lady, it's just without any police officer being at the door. Doing that, although I know that's part of the job, so, uh, maybe we just need to get together and make sure she has an escort, if you will, once she goes to load these, these citations.
That'd be her. That's not an issue for her to go, when it comes to.
Sir?
That's not an issue when it comes down to that, for someone.
Somebody to be there, so. So, chief didn't get my. Yeah.
While we're talking about this section twelve, that seems very confusing, the way that's. It seems to wonder.
This is our own, right?
Yeah, and Cal came up with that coverage, I think, she added section twelve.
You got three more complaints in nine days, okay. From separate households, so it can't be the same neighbor that tells the complaints.
Well, can I, can I tell you?
Which is probably okay. But then this being also persons not related, I don't know what that means.
So what the issue?
There you go.
Take your.
One side and I have a con link, Daniel Smith.
I wish you knew what your is.
Um, so the reason why she's kind of changed that is, um, we have had an issue over the past several months, well, pretty much ever since she was here. Um, and one resident complaining about a gym on the east side of town, just one. Nobody else calls but this one. And so that's why, and I think she kind of copied Fort Smith's ordinance on how they deal with complaints from residents. So that's why it's like that. And she's kind of put in there how you can't be another family member, because we don't want Joe Smith to call, and then Joe tells his nephew, and his nephew calls, you know, we don't want it to just be, just, again, just one family or one household calling and complaining.
Is this affecting more than one person?
Right, and so that's why she's changing it, because we're repeatedly having issues with one resident that will call every couple of weeks and complain. Nobody else complains over there.
Well, if the residents, Mark, she go to neighbors and say, y'all hear that, the brother of me's complaint?
Right.
There's nothing wrong with doing that.
Right, no, there's not, right, but that's what.
Yeah, and we wouldn't know that.
Right. Right, that's what it is. But she did tell me that that's how Fort Smith was set up, and she said that, that might be better.
That didn't make any sense to me until you explained it, and it makes perfect sense.
Look at you, you should.
But every time I look at things like this, I'm thinking about five years from now.
Yeah.
Because we've had this, this discussion about if you're not a ticket, who can, many times.
Right, we have.
Yeah.
I don't know for a while we have the discussion, because we have policemen, that's what they do, I think it's.
But we really don't have, we haven't had to really do that, because we haven't had anybody not comply. You know, after a while, we, we've sent so many letters, or we deal with them, or we call them, or we send a letter with Travis's name, or my county's name, and the mayor's name, and that'll normally push them through, you know, and so we've really haven't had to go to the point where, I know, I mean, to me, I don't, I don't want to surrender a ticket for somebody on their yard. I mean, because they have health problems, there could be all kinds of things, I think that looks bad on my part. But I also want our town to live pretty, you know, and so you get to that point, but like that ordinance says, it ends up going to Charlotte, Charlotte sends it to the mayor, and then the mayor and I, or whoever would presume if it's a lien, or if we need to get a vehicle removed, and, you know, so, so, so we do have two properties that have gone to that point, that are on the same street.
Typically, as you said, once the letter gets. Either encourage them to do it, fix it, or at least call.
Yes.
So here's why.
And, and we have that a lot, we have people call that say, hey, I had a heart attack two months ago, I can only mow half of my yard after eight PM, and the other half the next night, and, you know, and that's fine, I mean, we're willing to help, you know, and I'd be giving out the gap and mows my yard to somebody, because she, it was way cheaper than who she was telling, you know, so, I mean, we're, we're all. Is there anything else for me?
Not yet.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Any, any other discussion on this ordinance? We can, I'll make that motion second, or third reading, or definitely third reading.
About that one?
And second. Right.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Micker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Raymar?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
An ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance number five zero two, prohibiting unreasonably loud disturbing and unnecessary noise, providing penalty, therefore.
All right, thank you. I had promised that myself that I would give a Saturday date to watch Arkansas, but you don't have to do that, so. Sorry to ring that.
I suppose it's eight thirty.
Okay, eight thirty, my new goal. Number three is ordinance prohibiting heavy haul and semi truck traffic on Highway ten spur, or better known as Center now, and Center Street, so that's their third reading. We filled in the blanks, or I said, state Charlotte did, uh, on what we thought.
Right, on.
Kind of still missing. Chief has approved that filling in a blank, so what we have is the finished product, and you, the first two times, you had it as a semi-finished product. And again, as you all know, I'll say it quickly, this is to protect our Center Street, this. Yes, the captain, yeah, did you say the judge, kind of, kind of chime in on this, too?
He, he looked over.
Okay, okay. And so far, in my opinion, and I don't sit out here and watch the traffic all day long, believe it or not, but, uh, I do see it a lot, there's, we've done a cheap, or whoever, maybe, I don't know if we issued any tickets yet, and what we have, we didn't have a supply yet. But the truck traffic indeed has been much, much better, as in returning there at this, this, senior citizen center and taking the route, the actual truck route. Now, not everybody does. In many cases, they're local delivery, and we need them to come through and do their stuff, but every once in a while, I'll get behind them, and I thought, well, what are we doing? I do like to do.
Truck routes are officially updated, the R-DOT though, right?
Yes, R-DOT, all, the trucking company, yeah, they're not doing it just because they're designing.
Yeah, GPS things, not.
Not.
That's slow.
Okay, but I, I mean, I had noticed a, I live on ten, kind of disorder, out there at Bando Tech Road, so there's a lot of trucks, a lot more trucks coming up that road than there used to be, so. It's bad, make motion, I'll be approved for the third reading by title on.
Right.
And the motion's second?
Where's trucks on the back of the road?
No, Robert McKinney stopped that.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Micker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Raymar?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Yes. Truck routes established. An ordinance establishing truck routes, providing for definitions, and routes, liars, exceptions, providing for a penalty for violation, many provisions hereof, by inclusion into the code, filling all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent or in conflict therewith, providing for severability, and providing for maintenance.
All right, thank you. For number four, city attorney ordinance updating city attorney duties, for free.
Um, as you all know, I sent you an email Saturday morning early. There's no ordinance proposed yet, because I feel like we're still on the discussion stage. But what I did was, I copied every, sent everybody, copied the, um, an agreement that I would have with, you know, cities that were appointing. A little bit different situation, but pretty simple and pretty clear on the scope, and kind of gives you a little background as to why we're having this discussion. When you compare that to our ordinance, uh, it's obvious to see the differences, uh, so, also, maybe, use this time, maybe, to, uh, anybody have any questions about it, about the email I sent? Either anybody have any concerns? Roger, Roger did not. I guess.
I think the only reason it's gonna be some discussion is, is in the, is this, this is something we have had before, obviously. I mean, I, I don't know, I wondered if there's a state statute or anything that discusses what the duties of the elected city attorney are, I don't have any idea, unfortunately or unfortunately, I don't want to say that. Not really, it's just kind of vague, people are, are less talks about the process for paying a city attorney based on your population or your classification.
The state, state has left those duties to be by us.
Correct.
Determined by us, and we have in the past.
That'd be the only thing I have to, the only issue I can see is that we've already got duties set out, and I don't know. You know, I understand where he's coming from. Just in this email, what he's thinking should be billable, but isn't. Now, I haven't put these up against what our, we have a court list, correct, that lays out the duties.
Four forty-eight.
Yeah.
I think it's such a large dark, but I mean, I think, I don't know, maybe we can all look at it on our own time, but maybe it's one of those things, we're gonna have to say, I'll go trudging through that, figure out what's, where, where we changed it, what stayed, what goes.
And, and that was the point, sending that out, just so you guys can roll it over, and, you know, give me some feedback before I put anything else on paper. I mean, I'm not trying to, it's not something I'm trying to push through or anything, uh, but I think it, it's something that needs to be addressed. Not just for myself, but for a position to be desirable for somebody beyond my bounds.
I think, I think like I told her, this is a process, all of our ordinances are a process, and I do think the search should be put onto the first reading by title on that, so I'll make that motion.
Right.
And we'll keep working on it.
And there an order?
Is that not what it says?
No, I'm not prepared.
There's no order?
It doesn't have an actual order yet, but.
The email I sent you, Rob, has a copy of my contract with the city department.
Okay.
And.
Gonna, gonna be an ordinance, I think.
Yeah.
Good to front of that.
I concluded ordinance form, but I wanted everybody's feedback.
Do you think it warrants a study session, you guys?
I don't think it warrants a study session.
That's not, I just.
I like the way he's handling it now, as long as it's legal, we're just putting it out and let people consider it.
Okay.
I'm a little bit like him, though, I mean, I kind of want to see ultimately, but, you know, but how we're gonna do this. You know, break it down, dumb it down to me, I guess.
What, and, and.
What change, you know?
In the email, it, it, it kind of says, if your court level criminal prosecution will admit, document, or be communicating with some of city officials, and provisions of legal opinions on request should be covered by what he's, or the salary is, and he said everything else should be billable, he can give us some examples here. You talked about ordinance drafting in Charlotte, get us close to that.
I would like the.
Only, I don't draft ones.
Right. I'd like the ordinance to be able to take us to a population of about twenty, twenty-five thousand.
Yeah.
So, you know, if you look at what Tom's doing with his department, he's a senior financial analyst for the city. He's wanting to hire a junior one. That junior one is going to be his replacement, he's also got a clerk. We could do the same thing with the legal department. Or we could take the existing staff that he has, instead of hiring people, and use the existing staff and allow him to bill us for certain things. Now, it may be, when we get to a town of twenty thousand, we just say, we're gonna have a legal department, we're bringing it all in-house. You, you end up with a bunch of city employees. And I'll just, I'll say anything that's sad.
It's whatever, well, let's, or two people, is it, would it be cheaper to just be paid a bill as we go, or pay given staff their benefits and all that?
I mean, we, we look at that, whatever you're far.
Yeah.
We go, i- is it right for us to go out and start paving roads, buy road papers, and, you know, rollers and all this? Two years later, we're selling road papers and rollers, and we're saying it's cheaper just to hire somebody, we're not that big. Right. We're not big enough to have that and be able to hire those people of expertise. Because you get into like larger towns, they'll, he'll be on top, there'll be two or three lawyers working for him. I know when my roommate first got out of college, uh, I asked him, what's, what was he doing for the city of North Little Rock? And he said, man, I'm a dog lawyer, that's my whole job is, is dogs and animals. And he said, and I said, you mean like I got a lawyer that, he said, that takes up all my time? He said, and I work for the city attorney, and all, he just gives me all the dogs and animals, he said, it's incredible amount of money he spends on dogs and animals. We see that now. Someday, we might be there, so.
Well, I think that the mayor's kind of alluded to it, uh, that, you know, we're getting billed, you know, of our animal control. And you seen that it's getting to be such a big thing, that it's like, maybe even splitting that up, and so what was handled by one person, but like, maybe it's gonna be handled by two people in the future, I don't know, but I mean, it just, again, it begins on, we were seeing that the growth of it, you know, and, and, you know, the cost, you know, sometimes, you know, just, uh, for a city outside us, you know, and, uh, so I think that's, you know, something to be considered here, in the same way of the city attorney.
Well, I do think we're at that point where we're looking at buying papers, rollers, and all that, or allowing him to bill us out. And I just think, with our size of town, we're allowing him to bill us for those extra things, shouldn't be in his duties.
You don't have to worry about the road anymore, the travel.
Well, so this is, we've got this, we would have had to set this on the first reading, and I bet you.
I think you have to.
Yeah, there's not an ordinance, so, I mean, you're, you're basically just.
Well, next month, well, if you could, we'd like, I'd like to have a copy of the current ordinance we have regarding his duties. And then hopefully, Mitch Plutter had what, I mean, he's got this one with Hartford's on here, I didn't even go down that far, unfortunately, I don't.
Sorry, you're.
I don't remember. Well, I stopped at your name, here's the video, but anyway. And this is something similar, if you would like for ours to read.
I'm just, that's.
What they, this is what they have.
That's kind of the standard, I guess you could say.
I think it can't be the, the same, because, I mean, that one's like saying, per hire, I mean, you're.
Appointed.
You're appointed.
Yeah, that's, I disagree, that's not a.
Ordinance.
Right.
Yes, so that would be my concern, as an elected official with predefined duties when they're elected, is there any worry that you're changing those responsibilities during that election term? We can.
Well, we.
Same as hiring somebody to be a, a horse director, and when you hire them, you put additional duties to them, or change them, if this is an elected official.
We need to keep in mind as well, we have that ordinance in place, that, you know, when the new attorney's elected, or the salary, that salary ordinance that says the salary goes back to, to here, so we just gotta make sure all of that jives.
So, for our point, you know, we, we, you know, we can't reduce them on salary, they can't come in expecting certain duties, and then we add a bunch of humorous duties to them. It'd be kind of like reducing their salary. I guess he could resign. You know, if he just said, y'all are nuts, y'all are giving me so much work, it isn't worth the money. That's what I'm trying to prevent it.
Right.
Where he just said, you want me to go out and get all these annex, you know, all these annexation easements, you're wanting me to do this, you're, you're not providing me any background work, you're not providing me any legal descriptions, you're, you're throwing this all on me, and it's just me. I'm gonna resign. I don't want to get that far.
Well, just.
Also, we're not to that point.
You're not to that point, I didn't want to get to that point.
And that annexation was handed to me on Friday, because the planning department had all the layers.
Sure, so they did a great job. And, and we hope that that continues.
But, but I think, just, in line with that, when you said humorous duties, you know, I think, again, though, uh, it's a matter of how much, you know, uh, a response could be wanted, I mean, you know, if it says, there is a, a whole bunch, you know, then it gets that foot on the back burner, on the back burner, and says, well, when I, you know, have one of my staff be able to vote for that, but I gotta, you know, get these things done first, and these are, you know, parties, so I think, you know, that also, I think, you know, I think, of course, it's proof of being a good going forward, but it's also, I believe, you know, as far as getting responses back.
Well, there is a pay scale in back of the rhythm, so he certainly could start out less than what the last guy was. I'm saying, we can't change the salary out of the year.
He is making less than last.
Right. Yes.
Yeah, that's what.
He, he's on the bottom.
You said something about we couldn't lower the pay, but we certainly could lower.
We can position him to lower that, if you consider.
We can't lower it based upon the, I mean, based upon the lower minimum of, of the matrix that the ordinance sets.
So Travis, I think, if, you know, by next month, if you could bring us your proposal and ordinance form, take it into consideration, you know, I'm looking here at the list of ordinances that's set out there.
Provo, please.
City attorney salary, you know, the, all of those things, make sure we're not in conflict here. Ordinance four forty-eight sounds old.
And that's.
Order sixty-one sounds old.
Four forty-eight's what we're looking at. And I, I'll do that, I mean, that's kind of what I was hoping you would ask, you know, bring us this, or bring us that, and that gives me somewhere to start. Before I ask, I want to give you guys a baseline, what kind of the. Before I ask, I want to give you guys a baseline of what kind of the going standard is, so.
We're wanting to repeal these standard twenty-three years old. We're, we're much bigger than we do seven percent.
Well, I thought the, yeah, easily we read that here, I thought we go over it, we did one, all.
Twenty-one oh four appears to be one of the minimums in Maxon salaries. That one does not give any, you know, it's just salary.
We've had somebody discuss their hours of work per se, and I swear.
Well, this one, okay. No, I'm sorry.
How would you plan in a twenty-one zero?
Matrix of stuff, I need that some ordinance.
We just have one ordinance to support the whole.
I can do that.
So, you know, it may be that we go in at some point, because what's in twenty-one zero four with min-max and have to amend it. Or just refer it to the new matrix.
That's what I'd do.
So the matrix can be changed without having to change the ordinance.
And I want to apologize to Robert too, I didn't have his email, so he may be a little behind right now, but, uh. Anyway, we'll let you, if somebody could forward that, I've got his email, I can forward it to him now, but.
So, so along with the, you asked for, I think, can you, could we, Charlotte, get them, all these guys, the current ordinance? So they can, and hopefully you can review that before next month, that'll have, that's your homework, I think. So you can.
Yes, sir.
I think there's some very active ordinance.
Yeah, we really need four forty-eight, twenty-one zero four, and.
Well, twenty-one oh four was amended by twenty-two oh eight.
I'll get all thirteen.
So we need to do one of those repeal and replace deals.
All, all passion ordinances, so.
I've got all those, I think.
This was, I can make that, this was sent in the street, what brand were they?
Hang up our rocks anyway, sit down here.
And what you're playing.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anything else, Bill? I guess along that main, we, uh, blurted this current bill, you know, I got, uh, this isn't the, which one is it? The one that needs to be made? Okay, so I'm authorized payment on that, but.
No, this is a new one.
Oh, sorry.
There is another one, maybe.
Sorry. So it's dated six one twenty twenty-three?
Yeah, that, we just got that today.
Okay, yeah.
But there was another one that the finance department was needing for proof of payment of some other costs that would be passed on to the city.
So on that.
And so we all.
I interrupt you.
Yeah.
The, and I'm not trying to speak for Tom, I don't even dare to think I can speak for Tom. But there was some concern from the finance office, not on the bill, the whole bill itself, but on just the, uh.
Direct cost pass on to us.
Yeah, thirty dollar for five, is that right?
Six hundred dollars for penalty.
Oh, is that true? I thought they had ordinance.
This one just works right.
No, no, this, this is different.
Yeah?
Yeah.
It's the one off the last time, but.
So he was concerned, the finance board was concerned that the auditors needed more. And I will say today, and I know it's not our city attorney, but we have a bill from M A G today, that I've never seen them do this ever, since I've been with the city, and it's been a while with parks. They sent a bill for, one of the first bills for our senior citizens center, but it, within it, he had a separate receipt that he sent for.
Blueprint.
Blueprint. Extra blueprints maybe, or some.
I've never seen you do that.
It's very common, they've done it, they have.
They have, I've never seen.
M A G S, in fact, if they made them to want us.
Scratch everything I just said.
Sorry.
Great.
The engineers do that too.
Okay, okay, I just haven't noticed that before. So the concern from the, the concern from the finance department wasn't about that we didn't owe it or anything, it was just about he felt like due to some crackling, please, is it the auditor's getting a little bit of, some augmentation or something?
Yeah.
Well, if we're paying for a, a direct cost, like costs that were incurred by an entity, and they want us to reimburse them. We need the proof of have, them having paid for it so that we can reimburse them.
My, my thing wasn't city attorney anymore, and we were, uh, but that may, I know that's probably.
That's how we do every, every reimbursement type of anything.
But I said today, and I think so, so there I should have, I gave.
So the auditors approve just an itemized bill, cause this looks itemized, it's what it's for.
Auditors have never questioned any of my bills in other cities, but.
And I, and I'm not saying, I mean, I'm only going by what finance, uh.
So who defends us if we get, if the auditors come out, who is our defense?
Mayor.
The mayor, Drew, I think, I kind of think the city attorney is our, the person.
Well, absolutely.
So is it legal or not legal?
I'm not seeing where it's required.
I will say this about our auditors, they're great, but they, they.
They're strict.
They're very strict.
They're strict, it's very.
It may just be something, and it may just be something, and I think it's fair to say, we have called them, he certainly does, at one at time. And he should, he calls them out on things that he doesn't agree with, and it's not like you're, you know, explain to me why you need that, right? That happens more often.
No, but my understanding is, it's not so much his bill of hours, but it's being refunded for a filing fee.
That's it.
That's what, that's what Tom.
If a bill says refund me for this cost.
Yes.
They, auditors, and it is, state auditors, and it's re-audit, a lot of these smaller cities don't have state legislative audit. They don't, they're not audited that way, they pay for their audits.
That's true.
They forgive everything, you know, they're not, they don't require this.
Right.
If it's filed through a state county court, that might be already public record of filing date.
I think there's a difference between a re-abort, you know, asking to be reimbursed for something, and then you need proof, but just an itemized bill?
I'm, I'm just saying what I've been told the auditors have issued. I'm not, I'm not, I need, he needs to be paid.
It's been turned in.
I've been getting it at the auditor. Ma'am?
I turned it in this afternoon.
Don't have to, yeah. I think, so it was past history, I think, I'll, I'll deal with that myself, as I was wanting to think about.
All costs, you want copies of receipts?
Yes.
Sort of by mail, or notices, for everything that we do that's not bill of hours, you want receipts?
Who left it to pay and you want it to be repaid?
You don't do that in any other city, Travis?
No.
We did it with my campus as well. We do it with the mirrors, architects, if they pay for something.
But I'll be happy, I'll be happy to do it.
And if we get, if we get the, I'll be happy to have my staff do it for all of that.
When you make it onerous something, it has the possibility of increasing the bill of hours.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, I was, I was physically ready to say, all this may happen, once his staff has to do it, the mayor's a very glad, and I don't make fun. Don't misunderstand. It might be a deal, but I, I do know, and obviously he was here, so I'm not blaming all this on Tom at all, I'm just saying, he, we, he believes that that's what the auditor would say. We'll be talking to the auditors soon enough, and if we can all just be cleared up on the same page, it's, he goes away. I'll just, I'll just get a copy of all our costs, then I mean, it may be a problem, just do it. We all be.
Except the auditors can see it, and it's been entered out.
So do I need to make a resolution for this one, or is it?
You need a motion.
Yep.
Well, as long as there's no objection, we'll pay it, I mean. You don't have a buzz on it or anything, I just want y'all to see it and agree, there's no questions, there's no disagreement.
Is that why the April bill wasn't paid yet?
Yeah, yeah. Because it went through this one, and he, he's holding.
I still have to pay my fee.
He, he's having it for a while.
It's been laying on my desk, I didn't intentionally hold it.
I don't know.
Uh, I didn't hold it. It was laying on my desk.
Didn't touch it.
Lundy notes to me, I saw the bill, but when Mr. Marsh made it clear that we needed this.
I don't think we do that yet.
So, anyway.
Well, we need to get that settled, so.
Yeah, that bill's been appealed today.
Yeah, we don't like it, we're going.
You do have to check. That's a.
This is still an unbelievably, a large war hole going down, we're getting billed for having to figure out how to set up this building, this right, billed for the build process.
That's right. All right, yes, I would say make a motion so we can get this one. Make a motion, say.
By this current?
Yes.
Right.
Yes, yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Maker?
Yes.
Ms. Attentive?
Yes.
Rainwater?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes, okay.
Mr. Bell, planning ordinance, revealing and replacing zoning ordinance, twenty-two, page thirteen, change zoning before June's third reading.
Mayor Council, staring at what he said. This is the third reading for, for the zoning ordinance that, uh, uh, requires the storage facility to be built, and a future storage facility to be built in, for the zoning open.
I'll make a motion to fully march the third reading for Title I.
Second, thank you.
One question I have on this, just as explanation. When all these things were said, you know, uh, like on page thirteen, uh, that one highlight, it says a conditional use authorization under the Greenwood permitted conditional use legend and approved for the planning commission, what does that exactly mean?
Looking at.
What page? On page thirteen.
The shaded area?
Yeah, section one.
That means that if somebody comes in and they, they propose a, a storage facility, and they want to go through a conditional use, uh, then the planning commission can look at it, if they feel like it's a good mix, then it, then it will come to you guys, and you guys can make the decision whether or not to approve a conditional use.
But it's.
Put the back of your report. That way, that way we're not saying absolutely you can't do it. There is a way to, to do this, but it has to go through the planning commission and the council before you do. So it, it kind of takes the burden, legal burden off the city of saying, we've outlawed, uh, storage facilities. You understand? It, it, it gives, it gives us a little freedom where that's all that is.
And I was just wondering, where is that thing there, Greenwood permitted conditional use legend, what section is that in?
As far as conditional use?
Or where, yeah, or, yeah, conditional use, where it says permitted and conditional use, I couldn't, I didn't look that hard, but I didn't.
It worked, you said a legend would be somewhere, somewhere in that.
Or, or, or somewhere, I was just wondering where.
Son, would that be the chart that I had in the back, where we list all our conditional uses?
Yes.
Is it on the very back, you're saying?
And does that chart say that it goes before council?
Yes.
The chart in the back is just literally, it's a table, it's got the uses and the particular zonings in which it would be allowed. It's a basis, it could be, and so you would have uses that have the ability to have a conditional use permanent line to that.
And I guess, did you say in the back, where, what, you know, what kind of page, that it's not, on page four, it's not on the very back?
I was trying to see that.
In the ordinance?
When I, when I made that, I just submitted it to somebody to include with the ordinance.
Yeah, I see, it was a list that I sent you that, that was supposed to be on the back of, of the ordinance.
Oh, I know.
That has all the approvals, or all the different variances.
Slap number's going to get.
I think none left, either he got bored with us, or he just wanted to get out of the country.
I just have page forty, I mentioned your own pages, Rivera.
Well, we got a minute, I'll ask you a broad, fairly easy question. Any kind of, uh, variance for rezoning? Does it al, will it always come before us, or?
Zoning does, rezoning does.
Okay.
Now, uh, uh, variances start as a side yard setback or something like that, it doesn't come to you because it, but the zoning itself, anytime we rezone something, it does, you are, it comes to you.
Or building type that is not.
Now, if, if the planning commission turns down a zone, and somebody wants to, to, uh.
Question it.
Question that, they basically are supposed to go to court. Now, they can't come to you first and say, hey, the planning commission wouldn't allow us to do that, we don't think it's right. Uh, you know, but, but their course of action is to go to certain court.
I just, I just, now, we've been through this a million times, obviously, over these years, but I, I just want to kind of reiterate my own mind.
For example, we got one coming up, you know, the rezoning of the property in King Mountain.
Right.
Uh, they want to rezon that from, from a commercial to a, an archive, uh, to build new places. If the planning commission approves that, then it will come, come for you for your final approval.
We're open to the planning commission will.
It, it's, you know, it's, it's one of those, I think, it's their, uh, their point will be that it's been commercial for so long, and they can't get anybody to look at it, and, uh, so they would like to go, you know, they have this project, but you know, right down the street, now at the corner of Ridgecrest and Ken, Dollar Creek, the dollar store is going in there.
Right.
So there is viable commercial. They just didn't choose that.
That's on the outlawed thirty-five.
They didn't choose that, but they, they looked at the one across the street, you know, the, on the corner of, uh, Mount Harmony and Ken, they were serious about that, but then they saw that, uh, on down the street, and of course, the people that live there, they all, they all have commercial there. Those people in, in King Mountain, they want new places there, so.
Well, it, it obviously, the traffic's horrible, and unfortunately, when Vias has truck rations, and I'm assuming there's going to be a stoplight at ninety-six. So it's gonna be more worse traffic out that way, despite what happened to anything on that side of town, so. I just feel, and that injury weighs already a mess, and it's throwing more new places up there, we don't like it. I just, I'm not for it, obviously, because I, I understand the argument, it's been commercial for so long and nobody's done anything, but, I mean.
I.
I still hate to lose commercial property of stoplights.
That was, uh, that was my point, you know, when they came there, I said, you know, I can tell you what the planning commission and council go, they got, I tell them, I just. I said, my thoughts is, it's easier to take commercial, uh, residential and turn it into commercial, and then take commercial and turn that to residential.
Yeah.
You're losing that, that ability to provide a tax base to the city.
Right.
I said, but you're welcome to file for it, uh, this is Jeff Parker's sister, I believe, and, uh, so they will be there to argue that point. And, uh, either way, it will come to you guys.
Okay. Son, thank you. I got a side trick, what, Robert? Permit in conditional land use legend, and Hunter just gave us, is this some sort of an official document, or is this just the list that you guys have back there?
No, that should be, that's supposed to be included with the ordinance.
We need to attach it as an exhibit and indicate that language in here.
But, but, but if we just attach it to this ordinance, it's just part of this ordinance, which is, is that okay?
May I ask where it's referred?
About this legend?
Yes.
Yeah, it's intended to be attached with the zoning ordinance.
But this is your zoning ordinance.
So when you go through the zone, you know, when you look at your zoning and what's allowed, it, it's very limited. This tells you other things that could be in that zone, uh, so that you don't have to do, uh, you know, conditional uses and things like that, it, it spells it out.
So we're making this, this part of the official zoning ordinance?
Yes.
I like pictures.
This is the, the template for.
It's an exhibit.
An exhibit.
This is kind of like when we did the subdivision regulations, and we did the, uh, street, uh, qualifications and, and specifications, and we attached that to our subdivision regulations. This is similar to that, but this is for zoning.
Okay, we need to get a legend on the legend, what X and C means. Oh, wait, I got, I got.
Yeah, I, I didn't know exactly where it was either, so. The, uh, the other, uh, one I was posting on, uh, page twenty-five, uh, at the very top, where you're talking about, uh, signs. It says item C, and it says all must be approved by the Greenwood Building Department on private, and on private property. And I was wondering, should that be the planning department? On page twenty-five? At the top of the page?
Yeah, the department seems very.
Not, not consistent with our act. Not, not consistent with our act nine?
Yeah.
Planning Department.
We can make that change, we can, to the planning department, because, you know, when somebody comes in and does a sign or wants to put an sign, they goes to Hunter, looks, looks at it, and he makes sure that it follows our specifications for our sign ordinance that we've had in place for years, and, and so, but like I said, we do the planning department, we do planning, slade, building department, whatever you like for that grade.
So we do have the building department, that we were told?
Yeah, so, planning, building.
Should this just say?
This one says planning and development at the top.
Oh, it does say that.
That's been forever that way, uh, since Ted Burton's era, he started calling it planning and development to make it sound a little.
Era, or era.
Era.
So that should say planning and building department?
I mean, that's.
I would make planning slade, or planning slade building.
Those developments require building.
Well, whatever's in our budget, I think we call it planning and building.
So, Dan, would you give it or include the budget real quick?
We have this financial report, whatever's called in there.
While we're looking that up, could I make some more suggestions? On this permitted conditional use legend, um, conditional use says must be approved by the planning commission. Could that be the planning commission and council?
Sure.
And on the storage facility, uh, conditional use being C two, I mean, C two is that property you, Dollar Park out there, right? That's on center.
It's commercial property.
Is it C one or C two? It's C two now, right? You're on.
C one is our, is our.
That could be, that is right there, based on that.
The latest passups has got to be industrial, right?
On this list, it says conditional use is C two, which is how we ended up with that one right out there where it is.
Yeah, this, this, this would require, if we change the purpose, you said it had to go to council, and that's what keeps us from, from the legal aspect of all of that, it would open us up to the ability to have any commercial areas based on your approval after first going through the planning commission.
But section F doesn't say anything about city council.
No, that's what we were going to add, we're going to add it to the table and add it into the actual body of ordinance as well. Does that satisfy that?
So those two places need to add city council.
Correct.
On the top of the legend, at the top of that, and then on page thirteen.
Well, anywhere, anywhere during the ordinance where it says, uh, a conditional use, uh, is authorized by the planning commission, uh, should be approved by the planning commission, we'll add the council on that.
Cause it says that several.
Yes, under each zoning, we will make that change, so it does exclude the council.
This is only because I, I feel like, I know what the planning and building department's job is and commission's job is, but ultimately, I feel like the folks up here need to be the ones doing the changing of anything that's going to change the landscape or alleviate a tax base or make a bunch of neighbors mad.
I agree.
I, I, I mean, and I know, and I'm talking about having to go to court because something, that won't happen. I'm just saying, if we have to go sit in front of some judge because of the land issue, I'd rather be a decision be made, not something. So I, I, so any, that's why I asked you earlier, any rezoning of properties for residence or commercial or vice versa, we need to be relaxed a lot of the time.
So we need to have planning commission approve.
Well, every other commission, the, the water's water permission approval is what you hear, we're going to tell you what they said. And we say there, they usually, you know.
It's an ordinance anyway, isn't it?
Right.
So y'all, y'all got to.
I just feel like we, there's been, we went through a dry spell here where some stuff is getting changed out there, and we didn't know about it.
So it's basically, it should be simple by adding to the council.
Yeah.
And on, yeah, there's been a motion to say. But we can amend it by what we have discussed.
Which also includes attaching this.
And I, I recommend we add, add, add on section two, this facing page. It says this is exhibit A, that legend is exhibit B.
Well, this legend is very good, I, I just say on, on page two, if we could still put the, the column titles on page two, so you would have to kind of refer back to page one, just to make, make it work clearer.
See, we say, so we don't have to do this, we're trying to figure out what's where it's, what are you here?
Yeah, there's also two different tables there, there's one that's setbacks, and then there's one that's zoning uses.
And generally, if y'all would like to table this, instead of passing for the third reading, and if we can make these changes, we'll do it in the third reading.
I would like to amend my, uh, my motion to table this for those changes.
Let's see that one.
Let's not go to second, you all have goals, just table it.
Tim Martin's saying that the first one. Yeah, you need to read.
We have a new motion on the floor, which is. New motion is. Oh, sorry, just on, on page three, again, just a clarification on number nineteen, a, that PUD. His description, I, I can't quite follow, it says it's a development of land that is under unified, is that under unified control? Instead of unified, it just seems, I can't understand really the, the reading there. I think it might be, it's under unified control, it says unified, it has such unified. Page three, very bottom.
I'm good, man.
That's kind of wrong.
Good topic here. Is S three going to?
Yes, that should be unified.
Okay.
You have a, you have a thing, Charles?
Yes.
Okay. We'll make those changes and bring it back to you next month.
Your motion is to table.
Table, and bring it back with the changes?
Oh, it's still there on second one.
Roger, second, and, and amended. So, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Ryan Waters?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. Which row? City and Lake Administration.
Council, I would like to present to you.
Easy.
The ordinance annexing you our city flag. This started off in two thousand thirteen, and it has been a, 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 a part of my, well, part of my life for a long time, and we have finally got it, the judge has signed off on it. Uh, it's here tonight for its first reading. I would love to ask you to suspend the rules and wait the second and third reading, bring this into the city in time for our dedication of the customer bridge Saturday, and, uh, make this part of our city. It's our property, there have been no complaints on, on any of this, I think it's time that we bring it into our city and, and the police can start controlling it, and, and it'll be ours.
I have a question. I have a question, Mr. Brown. The Parks Commission voted to have it part of the parks, right?
Yes, they, they voted to, to take over the, the area we're bringing in under zoning, under open space.
Should that be in here, or does it not be?
It should be in the ordinance.
Okay.
But it will be zoned open space, so that means it's not residential, it's not, not a commercial, it's not anything but open space. It will be our premier park.
Section two says open space.
Without it being in here, when we establish, the ordinance establishing the park grant commission, it refers to what, what is included in that, so it's automatically included in that.
Yes.
Which row, Steve?
Question, uh, that's approved, is that being, the parks, the apartment could extend the east loop trail all the way around the backside of that lake?
I would say with the Parks Commission approval and with the council's approving any type of funding, you can do it. As far as zoning, zoning has nothing to do with it, it's.
Do you have any problems with some homeowners?
Uh, we're talking, this is our property. Everything that we are annexing is, is Greenwood city property, we're not annexing anybody else's property.
I'd like to motion to put this on the first reading, but I have.
I got a question. Of section two, if, if you make some ward, this would be a part of the ward, and then let that blank.
Yes, Charlotte, what ward would that be, was that three?
Not sure.
Just the lake?
Yes.
That's ten, ten.
Well, it would be in ten, that'd be two.
Two.
I mean, it. It's a question that they always ask from the state, it's a little more dissent, and it's not likely it's going to be somebody out there voting, so.
So I got a big two. No, there's one. So, I have a question, and, and I think we play off of it. Sorry, shut me down a bit, what, the property that is, that is a farm out there, that, that I've always understood, pasture comes right down to the lake, is there a wild cow in the lake situation? Are they, that's our property, right?
That's what our legal description is showing, that's what our survey shows.
To the lake, or can you tell?
Well, it, it's how full the lake is.
Right. But, but this is the.
There should be a survey.
This is, this is our, I call it the property boundaries. If there is something to that, well, there's something to it, but it's not level.
That's what they're asking.
We still have three hundred feet.
Yeah, I think they're supposed to have a three hundred foot boundary.
Around the water level, or water, word's water.
It's bigger, it's bigger on the watershed.
Yeah, not necessarily.
Right.
I mean, I, I mean, this is awesome to get it done, and particularly that as you are, it's been a long time coming. I just would ask, on, on your behalf, if your planning is, I think you should, to get around that lake with the trail, do we have that land, is that ours to put a trail on? Now, I know we're annexing all the way around.
Don't you have to have a three hundred foot buffer though, for water?
Yeah, I'm not worried about. Yeah, I'm not worried about that as much, I'm worried about, I'm worried certainly about certain, a certain part of the farm.
Well, I think it's, well, we staggered down three hundred foot, we're not there.
That's, that's my strong. Does this annex, does this annexation take in three hundred foot around the dolphine?
I can't speak to it too much.
I mean, exactly, that's.
I know we're required by health department regulations to maintain three hundred foot from the edge of the lake.
Right. I think it's, and I'm not trying to put though any value to the buzz or name somebody that we need to deal with, but it's, I'll make sure that we do what we're doing.
Your idea is the parcels only include the water, and you're asking about the three hundred foot of dry land, is that in these parcels?
This is what you see on this map is, is the survey showing our property line.
I can't make out the water from, from the property line.
Did you email it the color one looks?
Oh, okay.
I'll mail it, I'll fit you.
Is it on the, is it on our, our, our tabs or?
Hatched is our property line, correct?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I think you got plenty there.
Did you, you see what color it's colored in?
And I don't know if we can answer, but I don't have time, but I'd just like to make sure.
Well, again, you know, like I said, that's, uh, this is done, done by a professional engineer, and we've got his stamp on there.
So setting on the board part, where it's a blank, you know, will we have to get resistance? Or give a public?
There's a light there. It goes up really?
Oh, literally.
So it will be, it won't be a ward?
I would say the three hundred foot.
Oh, I, I knew earlier that it should be a ward, no.
Should be part of the, of whatever that is.
So I think your annexation ordinances though, or the annexation laws or whatever, tells you that, doesn't that define the coming into the, what ward it's in?
We, we decide what, you know, we, we determine the ward that is coming in, that, you know, like the annexation, we have, our ordinance is, says that if they annex, comes in as our one, unless we make a change in the.
But it doesn't talk about wards necessarily, or, or thing that does.
No, not that.
It's an population deal, and obviously, there's no houses involved here, so it wouldn't really matter, I don't think, what it.
That, I'd, I'd like to amend my motion to second the link, it's spelled in with the number two.
And we'll put Roger Ward two on the chart for that, that section.
Ten's.
Red water's kind of all that part of it, it's a property. We did it too, also.
You're in ten, you live close.
So you can split the responsibility. How's that?
Right.
That'd be the go.
Yeah, I'll do this.
You're off, we're gonna get you an eschman of fish.
I was worried about, like they said, the surrounding other landowners, but I think the shaded area on that map is not the water line, it's the three hundred foot.
Right.
I feel like there'll probably be some, the only reason I'm not for the emergency passage is to get one little bit of flack from whoever's moving the plane, I don't want to be, everybody's in contact. I understand it's not a professional, well, it's an engineer surveyor, but so is a real holler's property, it's surveyed by the same guy, so. So I'd like to. I think, yeah, but I, I mean, I'm talking about Shaw.
Right.
I'm sure that everything's close to setting.
That is a good point.
Well, we contacted all the property owners, that's us.
Uh, that's good.
See, right? Well, yeah, let's just go forward, and we watch, we just go to the. I second the motion.
Yeah, we have second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Ray Moore? Daniel?
Yeah.
Powell?
Yes.
Janice? An ordinance existing, the annexation of certain territories in the city of Greenwood, Arkansas, and making same as part of the city of Greenwood, assigning same to wards and part of the parks.
Thank you, I don't do this very often, can I get an amen?
I make a motion, we put this on the second, third reading of Title I.
Second, motion second.
Wait the second, third?
Wait the second, third reading of Title I.
Instead of put it on the second?
Yes, and make, and put in the number two, join the blank.
Yes.
Now, the only discussion I've got doing this is, that's going to make this instantly liable for any injuries during this dedication ceremony.
That's true.
We have toward immunity.
That's true.
Not if you don't do any merch, well, then it's thirty days after.
Let me just say on that note, if you stay off the top of the bridge. You might not get hurt.
Is there a second?
Is there a note? Yeah, I'll second Rob's, uh, waving the.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Ray Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
I'd like a motion to read that.
Okay, motion second to the dot.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Ray Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
James?
Well, tonight for the meeting, I'd like to hug all of you.
Thanks for your diligence and hard work, Danny.
Yes.
So we're still waiting thirty days, so.
That's what you wanted.
I would say, yeah, no.
What you're worried about is going to do that.
No, well, I'm worried about.
We had to have the attention of the senior. And like, around the, around like ten different parts. All right, good deal. Thank you, gentlemen. Number seven is parks. So Casey's not here tonight. Ordinance authorized related party translation to parks, are you gonna?
What I, what I understand is one of our parks employees, son, has a laser cutting business, and the parks director would like to get the item taken care of for the fourth of July, and since it's a related party, he felt that it needed to be approved.
As we do that.
Anytime we do this, the relative.
And it's all explained here, okay? Make a motion for that, this was the title.
Second.
Mercy.
Yep.
A motion, second.
You second?
I second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Raymore?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
I make a motion, we wait a second for a reading.
An ordinance authorizing the city of Greenwood to conduct business with Caleb Ersky, first time, declaring an emergency. Sorry.
Sorry? Yeah, please. I make motion that be, uh, wait a second for a reading.
I second it.
Motion second, wait, second for a reading.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Raymore?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
There.
Motion second to adopt.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Raymore?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Yes.
It's very, thank you. I make a motion that be, uh, emergency pause.
Second.
Motion second to adopt emergency pause.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Raymore?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
No.
And Mr. Powell?
Yes.
It has a.
Very consistent. Yeah, thank you. Number nine is the finest apartment. This is something, just Charlotte marks our attention, I believe, with the resolution, I don't know if you've seen it. Sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry, sorry. Resolution authorizing, I know, like we mentioned, ran a case for an inclusive park.
Charlotte, you gave us the pictures?
I have them on the table.
The only problem I'm seeing with these pictures, and my understanding inclusive park would be for handicap?
It's for anybody. An inclusive park means anybody, yes.
Cause I'm looking at these pictures, and I don't see how you're saying they're wheelchair down the slide.
Not all of it. An inclusive park isn't necessarily have to be inclusive. So not all functions of the park. It was primarily.
Rampage up to that water area.
Yeah, no, it matters, but it, there are elements of said, uh, equipment that, that are not handicapped accessible. The park may enroll this for that.
I see.
Yeah, I do that just as.
Set up a call. Y'all have other questions? And the cost of something.
Where? I don't know.
I think there's grants involved, yes, this is what we're doing.
Yeah, you're. So what's our portion? Is this for the matching, I don't, this would be a fifty fifty?
I think it's a fifty fifty grant.
Yes.
Is this, is the same grant that we were just awarded, or the parks that were commissioned, the department was awarded, two hundred and forty-nine or two hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars for, uh, despite that extra. Second, my day as the parks director is the same grant we got for the, uh. So this is gonna be a dog park as well?
No.
No, this is actually, uh, added to property, am I right?
Westwood.
Westwood, the property that was donated, but if you will, by the fire department, I mean, sorry, to the fire department years and years ago, and that's already in the bill, and then.
It's four acres, not a square.
Should be another part of building, Terrence.
Yeah. And then it's re-dedicated or re.
Allocated or.
Officially allocated by council land, or whatever, years ago, to the parks commission. When I was a park, he had, I was having a broken record. When I was parks director, we were, I was kinda after it for a, that's when you got it re-dedicated. We're gonna put a dog park there. That kinda fell through, so it's the same property. And Casey's, I'm thinking a little bit more, thought was that's a, I mean, that's a neighborhood, obviously, to use it, be open to all neighborhoods. It's not limited to that. Is there, is this coming, where's the money come from? Is it coming out of parks? Yes. Yeah, parks, yeah.
And Casey says he hasn't worked out with Tom, Tom and he had worked it out in the twenty twenty-four budget. Casey also said that this would be kind of a premier destination type park, and there would be only like one other.
Sort of in a trust county area.
Yeah, there's not a whole lot of them. Little Rock, Casey and I drove, well, while we were in Little Rock, receiving the big check for the, for the splash pad. We went, uh, looked at Little Rock.
Harting, is?
I would assume, I don't know if that.
She said that's all.
It's all. I haven't seen the, I mean, I've seen the design, but I.
Is that a lot that big?
Oh, yeah, that's about five eight. Are you saying it's gonna, uh, it's in the twenty twenty-four budget?
Yeah.
Although, I will say this on behalf of this grant, quicker, you can get your, your request back into them after receiving one, and you, and you do your diligence of getting something done with the one you just got, which then putting in the splash pad, beginning the splash pad qualifies them for another. But if you stay out of the loop very long, it takes us longer to get back into it.
How many of these grants did they give out?
Totally in a year.
Yeah, I mean, what are our chances, I mean?
Your chances, your chances are as good as anybody else, and I think it's even better because if, I know they will, if you get the next, this one done, or at least very much into it, you don't have to be complete, it's a understanding, you don't have to be complete in the splash pad, but you need to have, you need to have gone. Progress.
Get some engineering done.
Yeah, sorry.
Get some engineering done on that.
Sure, yeah, you got, I mean, it's a, it's a long process. You gotta have public meetings to say, this is what the city wants, um, in public, like, like these other.
Should, did you, uh, does Park man that all that?
To get the. Yeah, it's not just say, we want it, you get it, it's, you gotta, you gotta turn your paperwork in, and then you go to Little Rock.
Like your engineer paperwork?
Oh, yeah, you have to, especially in inclusive. I, I was just wondering, I mean, just for clarification, should we say that it's funding for the twenty twenty-four budget, or, I mean?
This, this resolution, as we prepare by, what did he crazy, Ken, and it needs, it says exactly what he needs to say for the grant. For the grant, uh, for parks.
Different than an inclusive park and regular park, it is very much handicapped, accessible.
Which is a good spot, or by the schools also.
I mean, the paragraph before the very last one is the item of interest. So just pointing that out.
Which, where you at?
The one who brought the paragraph.
So we're gonna pay after the bill, okay.
Yeah, it's fifty fifty, and you mentioned it, Rod, I'll approach you, I understand, you're signing the bank check.
Well, Parks Commission signed.
Yeah, well, you're, you're authorizing them, yes.
They don't.
And, and that's not, that's the thing to say, you're, you're.
Still, you have good money.
That's right.
And if they fail, it comes right back to us.
No, they, uh, general fund, I don't think, gives them, they're operating off their tax, right, Jules? General fund's not giving the parks any money anymore, are they? Or, or just county sales tax? I mean, it's all about sales taxes, I don't know.
They, they.
We don't give them money like we do police. They're running, they're operating off of there.
Our general. The general fund pays their employees.
Well, yeah, no, cause park is in the general fund.
That's true.
But it used to be, we've been.
When I talk about a billion dollars.
Right.
I'm making a motion, we, we adopt the resolution.
This is nothing but. Unless we're paying a million dollars for an inclusive park.
Well, you're not.
It's on something.
Bank check's a horrible thing to say.
I know, that's.
I'm quoting.
Up, up to, well, the reason I did it is you used to do it to me all the time, rightly so. And it's up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, as the map is. The city spends two fifty.
Okay.
They can spend two hundred.
So it's entirely a blank check.
That's right.
We could spend two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, Casey said this is three hundred and seventy-five thousand for parks.
So.
So we have that.
About two hundred.
Okay. Mr. Brown?
Sorry, I should have made that better.
Yes.
Mr. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Raymore?
Yes.
Mr. Daniel?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
It's.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, number, number nine, finance, no, don't, yeah, I tried to do that, didn't I? Uh, Thomas, not here, senior system probably, I think, I was gonna cover that.
This is just, we've been through this before, this is the taxes that were adopted from the year prior, because we about to pay twenty twenty-two taxes and twenty twenty-three. We only owned it part of the year, so we paid the taxes.
We're prorating.
It's property, it's property taxes, we'll say taxes, we've gotta pay them, and it's over the.
I didn't realize we paid property taxes on any of them.
Only on, because we, we weren't, it wasn't a governmental, um, property all of due twenty twenty-two. We acquired it in twenty twenty-two, and this is for twenty twenty-two taxes.
But we were, were acquired, it has a governmental interest.
I know, but it's a partial year, and we have to pay.
We're paying taxes, we're paying taxes. What was due?
Yeah, we didn't owe it all in twenty twenty-two, so we're paying those taxes.
Now, how about? How can that be carried out?
Do what?
Shouldn't that be carried out in the seller, we shouldn't pay him?
That, this is what we agreed upon when it was bought.
Yeah, that was.
That was the odds agreed upon.
And that would, that would handle all that closing?
We, we said apparently that we would pay it.
Well, when did we agree on that?
We've done this before, we've paid the taxes as part of the deals lots of times.
It looks very cold, cold, when I do that. But, but I mean, it's, I mean, finish, it's like you do that all the closing, I mean, you know, everything that's all.
Well, because you're not paying for, they weren't doing closing. This is, we're going.
Anytime I buy a house, it's, it's doing closing, I mean, I, I pay the property taxes, get all.
It's, it, but the time has passed now, and they're paying for the last year, and that, it wasn't assessed, and all that stuff in twenty-three. When did we close on it? When did we close on it? Earlier this year.
Hold on, I said, it was last year.
It was last year.
It was last year.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm saying is true.
So the first, the whole property taxes before we bought it was the link with, that's what we said, we'll pay them for it, sorry.
No, I, I would have to go look at the paperwork, see how it's handled, and the taxes at closing.
We need to see that.
But this, though, is not for that. That would have been for twenty-one, because it was in twenty-two, it's the prior year at the time.
Okay, I agree with that.
And that's why we're doing this. We owned it, we acquired it in twenty-two, so now we're paying taxes right there. They let go of us, we paid twenty-one, or they didn't, whoever, the taxes weren't due yet.
Well, yeah, your property taxes are always a year behind.
Yes, yes.
But I always thought, anytime you purchase something, you, you get caught up in.
Apparently, we worked that out at closing, and I'd have to look at the paperwork, but that's not what this is. This is for the year, the next year, then what happened at closing. Twenty-one taxes were due at closing. Now, this is for twenty-two taxes. Because that's what our statement.
What, so do we have a process there?
Uh, we have another piece of property that some taxes were due on, uh, there's some, some property that we own, Stewart, what? You know, that fire parcels and all that, volunteer, remember, we've said on the statement, you've explained it, I don't remember.
Okay, the, this has to do with the land of the lake.
Yes.
And so Greenwood Rural changed to a fire protection district, so they can charge, instead of charging dues, they charge a tax.
Yes.
And so all that land that was not in the city of Greenwood, city limits, that the city of rural has to pay Greenwood Rural dues.
And it's charged on the property taxes.
Charged on your property taxes. So that's why you wanted, that was the, when I went to her and said, would you please get somebody to hurry and get this in the city, because.
Now, we don't pay in the future, but it's.
Five hundred and four dollars?
I guess, I don't know how much it was.
It's five hundred and four forty-two collectively.
Cause she came to me, and I, I looked at.
Fifty dollars each one.
I called the, called Zach and said, what in the world? We went through all the ones that are in the city limits, and he said, God, these aren't old. And then I think there was five or six, something like that, that are outside the city limits.
And Chamber just by Travis to get on.
I don't know.
Anyway, it, it's all legit, you know what? For the taxes last year.
So, Sebastian County Greenwood Rural Fire Department is charging us fire dues.
Yeah, for that property, that's outside the city limits.
For how many years?
Those are guys that keep backing off of our ISO ready.
For how many years?
Letting us bail out.
Others, they just started doing that.
Yeah, I just changed the fire protection district last year.
The same men that keep using our ISO ready for piggybacking for their stuff outside, the same people that call us every time they need help or something, because they don't have the right equipment or manpower, that guy, those guys?
It's that guy, those guys.
Okay.
Well, I mean, it, it used to be, like the chief saying, it used to be by dues, you know, they used to people pay, you know, their dues. And then they changed that a couple of years ago, whatever that's, but it's, uh, by taxes, you know, so that everybody kinda gets.
That's kind of the thing, that they get help that's, no, it didn't see limits, Greenwood, they're just charging everybody the same.
Right, but I mean, this, this is just a, a recent thing, though, I mean, it used to be by dues, that's why we were there.
Yeah, and that, this is the second time I've seen it. Like, it was the year prior as well, and it was new to me then, because I've been looking at these things for years, of course.
I wonder what they charge combustible things outside of the lake. They charge you five hundred dollars because it's a lake, which is not combustible. Why don't they charge extra for combustible things?
I don't know, it's a, it's a rate for. Jeff knows more about it than me.
I think Jeff's the one that said.
Oh, wait. Welcome to the meeting. So our personal property taxes for the senior citizens center will be approximately about a hundred dollars a year.
Not personal property, but property taxes.
Property, yeah.
Um, no, we, we don't pay taxes long as we own it, but then, I don't know what will work out with S R C A, Um, no, we, we don't pay taxes long as we own it, but then, I don't know what will work out with SRCA. Cause like on our fire property, if we, we make money or charge money off of that property, we will continue to have to pay property six thousand dollars.
As opposed to on the paper.
Uh, well, no, if we own the building, use it for our purposes, governmental purposes, then we wouldn't owe it in taxes. But we will continue to, we have it somewhere.
Do you think we're not charging? We're not making money?
No, but I don't know.
If we rent it out to weddings.
No, but we have to towards Zach.
We'd have to see if that can go into the office of the senior citizens folks who bought the city, if that makes sense?
Well, we want to be the city.
For a wedding.
What?
Money that they can keep in house as opposed to us rent it out and then give them some of that money for their.
But they have.
So that we can just show that we own it and we're operating and then we don't have to pay the taxes on it.
About that, I'm interested, about something.
Hit Zach.
Sure, why do we not have to pay property taxes on the center area?
We don't. Oh, well, the pavilion up there, we don't have.
Why do we not have to pay proper taxes?
Well, I'm just saying, okay, so you have senior citizens.
You know, on that one, I really.
There'd been talk of on a weekend, rent that out.
Because we don't get these things.
So.
Cause we have a lot of them.
If we charge somebody to rent that out, she's saying we'll still be liable to pay property taxes on it because we'll make money off of it.
That's what Zach explained about the fire, cause we rent those out. He said, as long as we do that.
That goes?
We, yes.
And so then, so I'm saying if you have the senior citizens in there who rents that thing out off the city.
Some more.
And they make money off of it. And that's just maybe a little less money we have to give in our pocket or instead of.
Well, it's either six grand.
Are we renting it to the seniors? Well, I don't think so.
We, we are. We don't have that regular writing yet, so we're not, the idea is not to rent it. Probably because of. Operate by the heart of the nation.
I don't know, but they, they make money off weddings.
It's not that, but I don't remember and I don't remember seeing that ballpark property on there at all, so I'm sure.
That was a good point.
I don't know, it's all on there, so I'm not asking.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to take her rationale, why the senior citizens and why, why are they not charging us on the center area? Looks at the being because they make money, good money, off weddings.
Did we make money or is it non-profit kind of deal?
No, it's, it's a profit.
They make a profit.
Well.
But it was originally built as a governmental building, so.
Yeah, that's what I'm starting to think of, maybe that's what it is, we didn't just buy it from someone, I don't know.
I don't know if this, I thought this was.
Originally it's built as a whatever.
Yeah, but I mean, but we're acquiring it as a government, so.
It's got its center.
Yeah.
Yeah, we won't have to pay anymore if we don't charge someone, where does that?
And you're saying, like, where does that is the, 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 the fire fee, I mean, that's already charged?
No, no, it would be the six thousand dollars, the real estate taxes.
It's real estate taxes.
It's down to six.
We're exempt from it.
Yeah.
Unless we do it for profit, that, you know, rent it out.
Right, or we can do presentation.
Call Zach, Johnson, he'll explain it, I'll tell you, there's a law that he votes.
It's also not city limits yet.
Right, that's true.
I don't know if that plays into it all.
A little bit, I mean, it's just being a price. It's a city, county tax.
Actually less.
Yeah, in the city it'd be more expensive, county.
What is this true?
Well, we, we're not real, I think we already paid it after, so we just need this resolution to amend the budget for it.
Yeah, I was thinking twenty-two taxes might be killed.
Yeah.
Already paid, let's move on to the next subject.
Please.
You're supposed to get permission before you pay something.
Well, a lot of times we have costs incurred, amend the budget, you know, I'm not sure if they're holding it in eighteen.
I, I heard what, uh, Hunter said there, you know, that, I mean, if it's, if we index it in, I mean, it's inside the city limits and it's our own building. And so that, that should make it property away, I guess.
Well, now, if twenty-three, if we don't have anybody doing anything with it, we own it for twenty-three, we won't owe taxes on it, we're good. That would show up on the twenty-four, same. But this one, since we own it partial year, that is the reason why we're paying taxes. We've already done the transaction, it's on us to pay this.
Can we call forward and stop paying or change?
Well, Tom and Shannon may be holding it, I don't know. If you want to pay them. Cause it technically isn't due all the way, we don't like hanging around.
Make a motion, we table those until we know what the topic of our motion. Well, and our city attorney's got a little excerpt here, he's reading about exempt properties. Says public property which may be reserved for use by any person or organization with or without any fee for such use. And is being used exclusively for public purposes regardless of whether the event for which the property is reserved is coming for attendance or petition, participation by the general public. That's an exemption. So we're in or no rent?
So it sounds like not a big exemption.
That's not for public and private entities that rent that.
Yeah, well, if we're talking about, yeah, if you're talking about.
Public property.
Yeah, it's public, that would be, well, pavilion, that would be what's exempt.
So the senior citizens, if you're six block, it's all about cities public.
Yes, yes.
Public, yes.
It is, but we, we have, we didn't own it a whole year of twenty-two.
Well, I guess I just want a clarification on why we didn't go through the normal process of when you close, you, you.
We did.
I guess part of the taxes, you know.
It was the year prior, though, it was for all twenty-one, they look back a year.
Right, I mean, that's what you, you do, you get, you get caught up with all your, your taxes at, at closing and.
Not for the current year.
So you're saying we didn't own it for the entire year of twenty-two?
Right.
So somebody else paid the other part of twenty-two?
No, we, we owned the building in twenty-two and the way they look at it is, these taxes are due, they don't exempt it for the whole year even if we only owned it for partial.
The only thing that would change this is, is the closing documents, and I don't, I'm not trying to. Act like I don't know, but I don't know, I don't remember exactly all the details on the closing, those, those documents should, should tell us. Right. Here's a closing professor, we're a closing professional. So you, I, I feel, I think you should table so we can get all of our facts to you and find out when, how the closing ended up like it did.
And if it did, that's fine.
Right.
But I don't want to have to pay it.
Right.
Even though I guess we've already had paid it, well, anyway, get back.
Maybe, and so, I mean, I don't know that we did, I don't remember.
Well, this is, I've done this over and over again, called Zach over and over again, this is standard procedure, we've gone through it so many times that I didn't need to call him.
And we possibly been doing it wrong or something?
No, he, he maintains that we own it, it's not just him, I've talked to others in that department, they all say. That partially they're other shit.
I'd pay it too, but again, every time I, I bought a house, whatever, it's, you're at closing, that's where you get, you square up, you're kind of squared up with the.
For the past year.
For the past and, and you're, you're assuming, you're paying them for the, the part that, that they own because the, the taxes are in the rear, you know, they're a year late or whatever, so you're.
Yeah, we gather all those. But there was a second in that motion to table.
Have a motion second to take.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Meecher?
Yes.
Yes.
Greenwater?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel? Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, number ten is a resident wastewater, Dalton.
I've been requesting a waived pay order on some generator units that the council requested, I had in my budget issue. Due to, uh, supply chain backlogs, I was informed it would take eighteen months to engineer these, specifically the locations they would be installed. And the council requested that I determine if we ordered them now, at the beginning of the year, the price would be locked on when received them. I found out information out from Form Hill, if that was the case, I ordered them. I had a call two weeks ago, informed me that they have one unit done, they delivered it this past Wednesday, and the other two sold the shipless up in October. I haven't paid for any units yet, I did discuss with Charlotte and kind of determining that just to cover this, we brought you a delayed payment on these, make sure they don't get bit later.
Like a motion of waived any.
It's there.
For generators.
Yeah. Please, sir? Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Meecher?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Greenwater?
Yes.
McDaniel?
Yeah.
Powell?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, sir. Number eleven is a discussion, if you will, on the roadway. What we need to be mowing and what we don't need to be mowing on Center Street, on Way Seventy-One. So we started this morning, there was apartment head meeting, nothing took proof, this proved, this is a discussion of what council thinks, I think it's having a process. Uh, we have ordinance.
On your tablet, actually.
On your tablet. So you have an ordinance, what we have currently in regard to this topic. The reason it's brought up is, as you may or may not have noticed, we've got a really nice new sidewalk that is very near, which I'm not going to quit. Uh, on Center Street, and many, if not most, of the businesses. Being one, Joe, that takes very, very good care of said right of way, all the way up to the highway. There are other businesses along that stretch that do not. A couple, a few businesses and then some private property that will not. And if you keep going all the way up Seventy-One, I've always said, I can't wait till we take this over here so we can maintain it, because highway. Apartment didn't always do it, but are they the same, or is it the same issue all the way in town in front of businesses that it is beside Westwood? That's, that's nothing but a ditch, houses, houses, and then a privacy fence and then your homes. So I haven't read that ordinance, I didn't, all that, I've been reading for the meeting tonight.
How odd, section.
Okay. So, within the city limits, the city of Greenwood, you cut weeds, grass, trees, you rid garbage, roach, or other unsullied and sanitary, this is what we typically hold. Property owners accountable, accountable for, right?
And it's very vast.
And the last, though, I was reading, was to see how like on the blacklist, you can't find other mayor, if it doesn't need representatives to, to exist on, on any property. Or on any street right of way, excuse me, it's for joint property.
That's the no way we're about to.
So, yeah, so I guess we have an ordinance that we, we're strictly go by, but that's still kind of. Typically what we do, Jeff can correct me, I've been herald that long, but we, we tend, and we're kind of responsible for, in my opinion. If something's grown up and nobody's been there, nobody's been home or nobody's been occupying that building, we go in there and do the first initial get it down. And then we rely on those properties, that property owner to maintain their, their own. Now, the no ends pitch that I refer to beside Westwood, across from, uh, the church. Never. Westwood, thank you. I don't see any of those property owners wanting, coming outside of their privacy fence. And even, and I'm not sure if I live there, I would feel like I'm supposed to do it. And maybe it's just because the way it looks to me, this is just me. But if you're on the food strip or, and you may not be a food provider, you may be. Trying not to name those, the church, who does a good job, but there's some private property along there that's just really, and, and now that the new sidewalks there, it, it looks even worse. You can't even see the sidewalk, a couple of them. So I guess I just want to bring it to council to see what you think. Uh, maybe we need to dissect this a little bit later, I don't know if it's not, if you want to, we can.
Well, unlike you, Mayor, after years, I've told, uh, some life constituents, well, that's not our, we, we have no control, we can't do it, you know, that's the state.
State.
You know, and, and now for our idea, for, you know, uh, you know, passing the line again, you know, it's, oh, wait, I mean, that's four hours, one hour.
We don't have to look. These are the, this is just a law. And I mean, obviously we talk about these lines aren't that, that's accurate, but they obviously don't go with the road.
Right.
The property line. Yes, so I mean, I, I'm in the school of whatever we expect the state to hold, they should be moved by.
Which would be the old state right of way.
Right.
Right.
So where that RW is, we need to move back to the road.
I agree, I know it's a cha, not challenge, I mean, we knew it when we took it, Jeff knew it when we got hired. First thing I told him, I said, guess what, you're gonna, you guys are very responsible.
The thing to say is we want to make sure that we were in compliance with the ordinance and what it won't be.
Right.
If.
If it is like.
If it is what it says.
Stands like it is, I may need to adjust this, I don't know, maybe look at it. And it says. What part would you not be compliant with, Jeff?
Well, the, the ordinance, so take, and I'm not gonna name these subdivisions, but take some of these subdivisions where the back to back, they got fences.
Oh, oh.
So behind those fences, those folks are responsible for what's behind those fences.
Yeah, but those are the easements, is that in here?
Well, the easement and the roadway, you know, it's, it's, uh, I don't know.
But, but we have cleaned behind that, those situations too, because it's a matter of, of flight control.
Right, we want to get in there, right, and that's the problem, when a lot of those fences replaced, we can't get in there because they'd have to take down the fence for us to get in there.
Sure.
So, but that is still their responsibility, we just have easement to get in there, they do what's easy, but we don't have it for real. So.
One of the issues we'll have on Center Street, if we don't maintain it, we'll have people go out there and, and round it, and all of a sudden you got.
Not many.
Dead grass and I'm already seeing some along Center Street where those duplexes there by the Dennis offices. And then down by Hamilton Drive, it looks like it's turning brown, I think somebody's approved that.
Oh, I saw it, I'm ready. Um. But isn't there a separate ordinance somewhere about, uh, easements, like what you're talking to? Like up there, uh, Forest Hills is a good example, there's like that drainage ditch between the fences up there and everybody goes, you.
But it's, it's technically the, the homeowners' responsibility to take care of that. According to the ZWES.
Is that in this ordinance?
No, it doesn't.
I thought there was a separate ordinance about that.
There is a drainage. So here, so in, in relating to what Jeff was talking about between, between fences and subdivision in that right of way, I, I don't, you know. It's a tough job in that part of it, cause main, telling people, I said it's tough, it's gonna have to be tough, but it's an eighty-year-old lady, wheel lady that lives there and that's what's behind her fence. She can hire somebody, obviously, I, I mean, I guess she can, but you don't know, so I've always initiated it, I think that's why I keep going through so many street departments. You know, I've always said, you know, two years, two years ago, none or three, I declared some war on drainage. It, my, my thought process was to whoever was in charge of theirs to go look at said easement, I'm talking about between home, not necessarily right of way. And do our initial, even though we probably already did it sometime, a tree growing in there that doesn't need to be there and we have that situation that we're looking at right now. With the lady, I think that she come to city council maybe already, or she called me today. That, that is a potential clogging of drainage and it usually is a clogging or slowing down, so go get, let's, let's remove it. And let's, and, and clean it up and then inform said citizen, you need to maintain this, not everybody does, obviously.
Well, one of the issues that we've had with, like, pre-foolish, and I think that's what Jeff's talking about, is we don't regulate fences. And so these people put their fences in their backyard and they flood them, and all of a sudden, they're here. And another place is, they, they have a common back fence, with this, all of a sudden, you've got a, a two or three foot alleyway there that you can't get a lawn mower in, much less. Somebody with, you know, with a, a good sized mower, and so it just grows up and all of a sudden, I remember when Joe was, was, uh, uh, street director, he was removing trees behind there that were. You know, had grown up and, and, uh, he cleaned it out then and, and I'm sure it's, it's back the way that it was, but. It all starts with the fact that, that there's, the, the property owners association and the covenants and all that did not regulate their fences. And didn't make them come in and use a set, a common rear fence.
Right.
And they, they've allowed them to flood and so.
It's an issue all town and it's.
So is our current, um, subdivision regulations addressing that? Cause that's a bit of problem for years on.
And we, the, the city doesn't enforce covenants and, uh, property owners association come and go, you know, you know how that is.
Well, I'm not talking about covenants, I'm talking about.
We don't have fence, we don't regulate fences.
The, you know, when, when somebody comes in with a subdivision, you know, to build it. I mean, you can use these buildings if you want, that's the most current, but when they come in and say, okay, this is what we're gonna do, this is how we'll lay this thing out. I mean, it seems to me the problem that always happens is mainly these drainage ditches, like, whatever, you know, I think you got them up here.
Making, yeah, with the trees.
Or, you know. Once we kind of allowed that to happen with ours, with our subdivision regulations and said, okay, it's fine to build this like this, and you gotta put this drainage ditch in here. I mean, it seems to me like that's where the root of the problem is here.
Well, for the drainage ditch, you know, it is accepted by our street department because they're in charge of streets and drains. And, but then somebody throws a fence up there, just like the ones off of, uh, Nashville. Uh, when you look up that, that little narrow, uh, space between those trees and you see, uh, uh, cops cable and, and everybody else stretched across there. And then, uh, we, we have to check our street.
But I guess my question or my comment is on a new subdivision, I mean, we can't fix all these that are screwed up because it's happened over here. My comment would be on any future subdivision that have these drainage ways in them, somehow we need to look at that differently.
You know, it's gotta be. Exit it right of way to it.
Yeah, this has gotta be a fifty-foot drainage right of way, it's been set on it.
We have those easements and they're legal, legal easement, and then when Mr. Brown over here calls fence company and says, I want a fence from here to here, and it, and it goes across our easement. Uh, you know, when Tim has a water leak, he, he tells these people, you know, if you build a fence across our easement and we have to come in there, we're gonna take the fence down. But, you know, a lot of these subdivisions are built. But, you know, a lot of these subdivisions are built, they're, they're not, they don't, they don't show up.
Future. I mean, just as an example, if you said, okay, you're gonna build this new subdivision, and it's gonna require this drainway in it, we're gonna make you put this fence along the, the edges of this corridor, and cord this drainage way off, where nobody can do that.
Well, I think the problem lies, so, yes, I made, I tried, I'm not saying we didn't, uh, because nobody's here to comment on where the other, as far as the developers are too, sorry, east builders, I took all the two pictures you wanted. Let's, let's build this thing, or make, have them build it, so, ten years from now, you guys and Mary Kinzlo is not the bad guys for allowing this to be built, where it's cannot get in there to clean it or, or maintain it. The problem, as he pointed out, is you can make that rule, and then, a year after somebody moves in, and you're, you know, that subdivision's long ago, and they call these fences, and they tell them to put the fence, but there, there's nothing, it's hard to keep the fence from being built. It's not hard to take it down.
Yeah, you know, these subdivisions aren't built with fences, the fences come out after.
Right.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is I think maybe we should look at that as, as putting, changing our regulations, saying, if you're going to do this, we require you developer, to fence this corridor off, and nothing can be done.
I think Tim and his water, and his water bill, does he address that, Connor?
Well, I mean, you're not allowed to put anything over the easements, but I, I get three to five phone calls a week, and people asking me if we have any fencing ordinance and fencing regulations, and I have to tell them no, that would be the simplest solution, would be to come up with an ordinance that regulates fencing and wire it permanent, because then myself will have to go out there and physically look at their flat, and see if there is a dedicated easement, and tell them that they cannot block that, or if they are, they have to put a gate over it that allows access. And that's what Fort Smith does, I have so many people ask me.
I know, I know the fence guys hate Van Geren, because you bring up Ace, and I go down there and work, and they say, I hate Van Geren, it's the most regulated on fences, we have to go down there, tell them what we're gonna do, and they tell us what we can and can't do, and there's a cost, they like Fort Smith a little bit better, and I say, what about drainage? Love drainage, nobody cares, and then that's what we're dealing with.
Really?
We're dealing with this mess where nobody cares.
They only care later.
Now, remember, I, I brought at least two or two, maybe three fence ordinances, and, and it was not well received, but the council didn't receive it very well, I still have them in my file. I think we need to revisit that, and we can do that in our P, because it's, it's already there. And, and I don't mind if we're just like Fort Smith, or just like Van Geren, but I can tell you, by working around fence companies, Van Geren has the, have the harder regulations, because they hate Van Geren. We'll, we'll take a look at Van Geren, and we'll.
So, I mean, could you make a, I mean, I would look at that also from the standpoint of, if you have a fence, you're not grandfather. You know, if you have a fence that's across an easement, and we have a problem, your fence is gonna have to go.
Do that happens.
Well, that would be far more beneficial than anything moving forward, because we try to get all our utility streets out these days, versus how it's done back then, so, something of that nature, as Daniel pointed out, would benefit us as we make repairs over the years.
I would much rather have a reputation or, I'd rather behave you by the fence companies, rather be Ace with all of them, than it ten, or five years or two years, whenever that builds out, out there.
Well, I, I like the promise we're on.
With the residents, here, here's what happens, and you know this, with the residents that live there, who've had the fence put up, and we can't get in there to clean it, as we should be able to on a, on a regular basis, because of their fence, then we give it a fight with them. We'll tell you, we have to tell you, Vince, now, are we all getting it put back up? Not really, so, I would rather have the conversation with the, and put this thing in place, and build a ride, you know.
You know, we've got, we've got fences around that are made up of old roadway signs.
Sure, or one of those pallets.
We've got fences out on East Gate that's got, that's made up of pallets, you know, those are the things that, that just drove me crazy, and, uh, so, like I said, we're on it, we'll, we'll get you something.
The world would be a happier place, you know.
You know, fences, fences in the roots, we don't regulate, so let's go after the fences.
We started this a long time ago, there was a place up on Lincoln that had ungodly fence, about everything, known to man, there was sheet metal, or it was wood.
Exxon station.
And I thought we had addressed that in this unsightly, that was part of our unsightly debate we were having at that time.
Yeah, that was free, and I brought one of the, one of the fence ordinances, and, and it was kind of, it didn't work.
Travis can maybe come out on this. I really wanna be funny, say that's how you deal with them, I'm not, can I say it? No. The term unsightly.
I've never built for you in any way.
The, the term unsightly, we were advised by, by municipal league a few years ago, I think.
That's what happened.
Yeah, they did, they were talking about, yeah, I remember that, it was, the structures of, of fences.
Yeah, we're real careful.
Yeah, that's, that's in the eye of the beholder.
Exactly.
Well, I mean, just, just because somebody said that we had an issue with it, council was ready to pull the trigger, I'm only talking about, but we got, got it from the, the discipline.
And I know, I'm not saying, I mean, I'm, I am saying, I don't get it, I was president, so I have to do it.
God, like I said.
But, I think we did it.
I'll bring this up at next meeting.
Freeze, exactly like you brought before, and then we'll get to the municipal league.
Yeah, like I said, we'll look at Van Geren too, I like the.
You just, you just need to make your ordinance read about what types of fence specifically you do, don't allow.
A lot of those are covered in covenants, and, and pro, and a subdivision like, uh, Forest Hills with a good property owners' association, they, they regulate that pretty good, as far, if somebody couldn't just come through and put a chain link fence up, they would make them put a privacy fence up so high, you know, turn it a certain way and all that, but when you get into other subdivisions, uh, that have had, uh, a property owners' association, and that has just kind of gone into the weeds, like Deerwood and some of the others, then you find these places that, that one house will have chain link, the other one will have a privacy fence, and the other one will have a pallet fence or whatever. But, uh, covenants and, uh, property owners' associations are two things that it's hard for us to, to regulate, but, uh, I like a good, good property owners' association and, and a good covenant that, that somebody enforces.
The funny thing is, that the ones that don't have good property owners' association, every time we bring up our subdivision regulations, we get told, we can't do those because of property owners' association.
Well, we, we overrule property owners' association.
Or covenants.
Or covenants.
Now, that's, I thought we were told we couldn't do that.
No, we just can't enforce them, it would be like the fence ordinance, in other words, we don't have a fence ordinance, and if the covenants has a fence ordinance, and then somebody, uh, puts up a fence that's not covered under the covenants, we can't go out there and tell them to change it.
Now, when we tried to pass this deal about covers over, uh, RVs or a front yard, if we were, I was, I'm quite certain we were told, our subdivision regulations don't, don't take effect on those. People put the big awnings and Ford Hills over their RVs, we tried to regulate that?
Yeah, that would be under our accessory building ordinance, so we do regulate that.
We actually stopped one family from doing that, and it wasn't about the awnings, much it was about the distance it was from the, from fence. And so, they, there was no other place for them to do it, so they won't do it, I mean, I know, so, I mean, I remember that specifically.
Well, that, that would be under our accessory building ordinance, yeah, so we would be able to regulate that.
Uh, I just swear, we, we went to a, a point there where the realtor lobby had went to Little Rock, and had them pass where subdivision regulations would not, couldn't supersede covenants and property homeowners' associations.
The, uh, what you might be thinking about is the, uh, regulating what the building, uh, the outside of the building, you know, like brick or whatever, we can't regulate that anymore. Uh, if somebody wanted, I guess, put sheet iron on the front, it, it wouldn't make it.
So, if we pass the ordinance that said that, we gotta have a chain link fence in our subdivisions. If our subdivision regulations said, only you have to agree with the chain link fences.
I guess we could, I don't know why we couldn't.
We've been down this fence.
I, I, I'm, I'm, why we're going to win that with this town.
You can say that, well, fences, but we can't say with the, uh, the actual structure of the.
And, and what happened was, there was a planning commission meeting in Springdale, and they were having a discussion on final signing of the folks' steel sign. And somebody in the planning commission said, well, why don't we just all, all sign? And it shook the building association up so bad, that they got somebody in Little Rock to pass a, a state law that says that the planning commission and cities cannot regulate what the outside of the building would be.
And I remember that, well, because somebody was mad at somebody.
And they, they've tried to, they've tried to amend that several times, and every time they just made it worse, yes.
I will real send a little bit, that's, just because that's my job, I think. The original, yeah, this is all great conversation, I think it's very important what came out of it, one, is that we can go on, or you can tell somebody to get something together on fence ordinance. But I just wanted to bring it to you, and, and I'm gonna ask you to vote or tell us exactly, until we digest this thing, and see if there's something better we can do. In my opinion, and I think it's been echoed a little bit, is that we vote what's not being mowed by the residents, on, on the, on the, on Tim, or I'm sorry, Center, specifically, it's the gateway to our city, it's very important, does that mean we don't do it on some other highway?
Should we, should we just say commercial corridor?
Yeah, or, you said that just once, so, yeah, I, I think that's a good.
We shouldn't be responsible for mowing commercial property, it would be weird, huh?
Well, like, if, if what a bulldog.
Exactly.
If Michael Bell wants five-foot grass around their business, if they think it's not hurting their business, that's.
I know, it's more right. And we voted, by the way, we is.
I'd send him a bill every week for a mowing.
We can, I'll say, I'll say send him, but, but still, I'd like where it to be mowed and send him a bill. Right, and that's what we're, we're going in and billing him.
We knocked it down so we could get somebody to mow it, because he could, he could get more in the way.
Surely, well, there's a thing to it.
Yeah.
Why? Dirt, dirt, or ground, yeah, I'm sorry. I mean, I do, if I'm doing it around my fence, I don't want we need it, but I don't want Center Street, I mean, though. I'm just saying, that's commercial corridor, I mean, like I said, right away.
And see, I think our ordinance, our current ordinance gives you the right to go to the store crowd and mow fence.
Yes.
Travis is, Travis is on, on the store practice, and the rock house.
Right behind it? Now, I saw that the day I was gonna bring that today, that's been.
In fact, I instructed Jeff or asked Jeff to put that all this stuff on his moment, probably list to, because it's as bad, it's worse.
But I agree with you, with the, uh, people that have their fence, their Westwood, they're basically, that's not, that's not my yard, or my right away, or anything, you know.
Yeah, because if you notice, once you get into town, you're coming in from town, and you pass, and I'm not, this is not just Westwood, right? If they know, that's not their yard, is what I'm meaning, but if you right past Westwood, there's a few homes without fences, and they're facing.
Jeff.
Et cetera. So, there's just a few, and the ones that aren't, they will be hitting us head very, very soon, I can't remember which ones, there's one that sticks out on that.
So, what are we arguing?
I think we're just gonna, I think y'all, with y'all's blessing, we're gonna mow what needs to be mowed, and not worry about it for now, and then maybe come back with these, with more specific, or maybe change that a little bit, since you're quite aggressive.
Yeah, I just feel better that, you know, we, we bring it up, and we're not charged, that, hey, we're, we're mowing personal property.
Right.
That's the big thing, yes, we kind of want to, we've had ordinance, and, so, I just wanted some clarity.
That sound good? Okay, well, move on, and thank you, good conversation, next one is lighting of ball fields at the South Sebastian Boys and Girls Club.
I have to add, I mean, there was a discussion, I mean, obviously, a nice discussion, last month, Kenny was here, a couple different people commented that we'd like to figure out how to help, uh, fund that, um, I don't know if we can figure this out without Tom here to tell us some numbers specifically, but, uh, the changes we made, where we pulled the ARPA money back, uh, into the general fund to be re-appropriated, I don't know if that's money that, for that, um, or, you know, just so we could give Kenny some kind of, of an answer about this, or what our, what our leanings are. I think there was, we took twenty-two, the whole thing, and then there was an option to do it on three phases.
Four phases.
Four?
Yes.
So, when it, uh, there was thirty-games, twenty-five, and that, and reason.
We have got to reschedule that, because Tom cannot make it, they, it isn't scheduled for, so he requested that we try to do it on that Monday, because they don't want it there.
So, did he give you a date?
Yes.
That's, that's. So, your suggestion is that be discussed, and link, I'm just wondering, when, when that, now, you're, if it would be better, with Tom in there.
That is July twelfth, and he asked if it can be moved to the.
Oh, just the next day.
The Thursday.
So, a month away, two or a month away. Still, and, and, and I think that Rob's got a very good point, uh, but I'm, I'm, I'm still in favor, still, I do like it, you know, the four months, or the four installment kind of deal, I'm, I'm, you know, in favor of that. And see if we can, if there's any way that we can swing, I'd be back for that.
Is that okay with everybody?
I mean, like I said, we don't have a, a resolution or anything here in front of us now, so I don't know.
Well, we had, I thought he'd given us something, kind of, I had broken down the numbers last time.
Yeah, he did.
You're talking about more finance.
Well, I mean, if we wanted to approve something tonight, I don't know if we can do that.
I would be hesitant to do that with her.
And Kenny, you're just wanting some, you're just wanting some, know where we're standing on that, right?
Yes, sir, for we could schedule everything in, and, you know, July and August is, of course, your driest month, and try to get those over there, and everything, and the lighting, it's bad, I mean, it's bad.
I got it, you're phasing in, when you saw Ford Flex, a phase or not?
Yeah, the center of it, that is right, where the, it will light up the infield.
Okay, not, not around any.
Not around, that's a center.
So, my question would be, with a, with a phase, what, what would be the other phase?
Then you have the outfield on, uh, on the Ford Flex, and then you have basically field six, and then you got field, field eight.
Okay, so my question would be, what would benefit you the most for them to think about, especially if they're gonna work?
It would definitely be phase one, you know, and that's one good thing Dane's been out there for a long time, and he understands everything, and also, it helps us with tournaments.
So, they end up with all four, one, two, three, four?
It's just, yeah, I think there's four poles in the, in the first phase, and they have, I think, twenty-five lights.
No, you could have a tournament or more of a tournament by doing that.
Right, you could do stuff, doing stuff year-round and everything.
Okay.
Well, Kenny, could you bring, you know, you said your latest proposal, that, that was like eight thousand dollars less, or whatever, and, and kind of, again, break that down into, into those four sections, you know, for us, for the next meeting?
Yeah, I'd be glad to.
We're not even consider, I mean, pending the, what the budget looks like here, uh, two, two phases, yeah, you know, if one done now, let's get the other one in the budget.
Get the four plates in, build it out, feel done, and.
Yeah.
But did you, did you bring that proposal to us, uh, at our July meeting, and then we'll have our budget reviewed, you know, July twelfth, you know, so.
So, if everybody can change it to the.
Thirteen, thirteen, four, five, six, that'll work.
When's our council meeting?
There.
Because you're gonna end up having your budget reviewed after your meeting, which pushes this to August for me, for field. Unless we back our budget review before the July meeting.
Well, that will give us a full quarter, he's, he's gotta get the numbers for June.
Right.
We could do like right towards the end of June somewhere.
He doesn't.
Still would have.
I mean, right, we're not gonna have a full number.
For the major study finance, do a little special call meeting, where you talk about all this at your council meeting, and then you can vote on the thirteen.
Well, e- even at the July council meeting, he'll give us a report, and we'll be able to tell. Well, e- even at the July council meeting, he'll give us a report and we'll be able to tell where we're at.
You might not need your finance.
Yeah.
Budget study session.
To determine this, we could jump around about asking that question.
Well, I do, with what you're saying. Get all that to, sorry, quicker you get that, Kenny, to that man again, that's not here tonight.
Every, the other one, if Arkansas Valley does have.
Yeah, our city council meeting is on the tenth.
Yeah.
Does a holiday.
Yep.
Parents' Monday, hadn't.
So four days in a row.
So I agree with, with Daniel, I said the weekend's four, I don't, yeah, as I was in budget review, we didn't address it all July ten or whatever, our, our city council meeting with the stuff that Kenny provided us.
Maybe we should have a major decision on the.
Yeah.
That's what they did back then, they got a calendar. So do you want it on the.
Yes.
July agenda? It will, it will be.
Yeah, he may, like I said, he might do a forecast, what month is our, all types of, at the.
At least before the question.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, hundred percent.
Got it.
Well, so, do we need to add any pressure on the Arkansas Valley guys to help out or no? A lot of love, thank you for.
Yeah, uh, just talk to Sean, that's who I'm talking to, he's a good guy, breakout.
He's a real.
Okay, we'll leave it or not? No, you're not, no, 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 I was looking at her saying we are on.
Uh, this meeting?
I can wait, Rob.
All right, Rob, fire away.
We are, thank you for saying.
I have, and I, I visited with Mayor shortly about it, visited with Travis shortly about it, I have two, I have some amendments, two of them. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't bring them because I'm working on two of the four. So one of them, I asked Hunter to show four hundred foot distance on the map and he did.
Miss Vanna was watching.
And you could see it.
Mr. Vanna.
The four hundred distance, if we made that amendment, would, would help us, Lafayette. The second, and, and I, and hey, I, you know, I'm fine with the ordinance, you know, I. I copied it off the common ways, I like the way the common way developed, uh, the distance was not part of common ways, not to the extent that ours is. Uh, four hundred feet would do bad. I guess, uh. I'd, I'd like to see what y'all think about it, the other thing is, uh, that, that would be amending item out. Another part I'd like to amend is, is Kay, this is in ordinance, uh, acting dash zero four. Kay?
That ordinance is on your tab.
What?
The alcohol ordinance is on the tab.
Yeah, so Kay talks about fees and taxes and the, and the penalties. I would like to, I would like to restrict that to on trails and trails construction. And these are not my words, they're the mayor's words, you know, we're woefully behind on that, you know, this is such a big deal. In communities with, uh, you know, quality of life, that of trails, trail construction. So I'd like to amend that. Those, those I don't mind bringing forward, but the one, the one I had that.
We're getting already out of earmark, new year mark.
Yeah, but I, I couldn't get, you know, I was getting pushed back on, Tim was one of them, was pushed back on.
On what?
Originally I put it to Boys and Girls Club and I got, I got pushed back on, so I dropped.
What's going with the Boys and Girls?
Originally I tried to put it into the teenage departments, now I want, I was wanting to put that in for, restricting to trails. So.
Is that a good sidewalk?
It could include sidewalks. I would like, so my third and fourth one that I'm still working on. Involved municipally and they, uh, I, I guess I'm kind of out there a little bit, they're like, what are you trying to do? I don't know if that's legal, you're gonna have to call back, I actually visited with Travis, because what I was, was my question for Tim, can we, can we district off a food court? You know, we have ordinances now that, so you have private lane, can we make, can food court, you know, apply for the private club license? And I think if we don't address it now, it might come back up, now if we address it now, and there's just an answer, just flat no, it's just flat no, we can just put in a no.
So same thing as their.
There's my fourth one. Can we go ahead and allow the council to, to declare a couple other type of districts and I'd like to declare them immediately in this ordinance, which may be the square. The junction down at Denver Intense Park and the curve. And just go ahead and declare them immediately, leave it open to where others can be declared in the future by the council, it'd just be a council vote. That may eliminate people coming back, coming up to us and going through this process when they've got some sort of obscure place where it just doesn't need to be. It also may make that property in these ju, in these areas where they know that they're approved, when they build a building and, and make an investment, they've already got, it's already there.
So what would the entertainment district would be an exception to all the other regulations?
Yes, the entertainment district would be an exception to all other.
So just for example, you'd say fast food alley is an entertainment district? Or a three hundred foot corridor along, I don't know, a hundred foot corridor or whatever?
What, wasn't my idea, you could, I was talking about just circling off some places, some intersections.
On your, the square, for instance, you mentioned the square, would you, would you just say it would not be affected by that four hundred foot?
Right.
Obviously, the square is, the, the, the property is obviously right on the square.
That is true.
Yeah, so you're talking about like the premium best, somebody pulls in there with a beer wagon, they can sell beer during the.
You're not gonna get to ABC with that, that's not a private club.
But that's in your entertainment district.
But it's still has to operate as a private club.
I'm talking about if it has to be a building on the square.
I mean, you've still got the problem with ABC.
You're asking questions that I'm asking the municipal league and ABC. And, and those questions that you're asking me, I told Trav, I, I visited with Travis, I said, when I get some little more defined answers, then me and you're gonna sit down and we're gonna call them together. And write this little section together, I wanna make sure we're really legal. Because he's gonna be one of the fences anymore, so. And then my other question was, and I think I've got a good answer on it, is if you look on a, you know, Arkansas V U's products are totally exempt from this ordinance. I wanted to add Arkansas brewed, Arkansas locally brewed and locally distilled products exempt from this. Uh, I'd like to add that. So I've got three that I feel comfortable with, adding the locally brewed, locally distilled. You're kind of, you're kind of encouraging someone to come in and invest in a, in a local pizza place with their own little.
Microbrew.
Microbrew.
Okay.
You're, you're encouraged, you're also, when you, when you lower the distance, I'm, I'm actually taking care of this Lafayette person. By, uh.
Reducing the fee?
Reducing the fee?
Yeah, reduces it to four hundred feet.
Yeah, reduce loud to the fee, and I, I, the taxes and everything, I don't believe exactly the same, nobody complains about, I mean, nobody likes my taxes, but she's not complaining. She just wants off the taxes.
She just wants to go home.
How many years?
And then with the entertainment district question, which is, is a municipal deal, just pre-circ, pre-determining a few areas and circling. The square was the one coming to mind and then a couple of intersections come into mind. These are things that need to take time, they need to take throughout the summer, but this is what I have in mind and I'm, I'm really curious about the food court deal. I wanna have those answers before I bring it to you. Uh, because I think the food court deal will come up, I think the food court deal is gonna be something that will grow and get bigger and bigger in time. And I think somebody's gonna pop in there and say, I own the little deal, it's private, I want a private, a private club license, I'm building a, you know, a pavilion out there. I'm gonna put a little fence on it to satisfy ABC, I just want the opportunity to have my old vendors circle that area and see if it works. Answer maybe no.
What's the food court deal?
What are you, food court deal, what's that?
Ermark food drive. Right?
Yeah.
So, but on your, I had, I'm trying to figure what you're thinking.
This one's.
Well, you could ask about a food, a, a beer truck, if you will, or whatever, parking on Freedom Square, Freedom House, that was that route?
That's, that's absolutely no.
Well, what, what, and I'm, you know, I've been talking to, I think these are good ideas. And, uh.
The lawn is doing.
And the. My name's Daniel, Daniel. With, what difference, my question, my question, so food courts, how would you get alcohol there if they didn't come in temporarily as a food?
This is, this is, this is the questions I'm having, that I do not have answered, this is the questions when I get kind of a defined.
Yeah.
Answer, I'm sending them down to Travis and me and Travis are calling them and then Travis is gonna say right.
And an entertainment district is where you can walk around, right, with your open container.
Bay Area has one, right?
You can't leave that.
So it has.
The, the, the Bay Area is, yeah.
But they are different than us.
They are.
They are different than us.
We have the special wet already.
I'm attempting to go in on private, private food court and we've done my ordinance. And that guy that owns it, guy or girl, says, I want a private, private, private club license for this property. Anyway, that's not what I'm working on, I don't have the answer, um, I'm, I'm working on it. The other amendments, the amendment, amending four hundred feet, what do you think about Tim?
Oh, it's terrible.
What do you think about it? What do you think about it, Rob?
I hope I do.
I see.
I'm okay with it.
Tim, you think it's terrible?
It should be zero feet. I wanted to go. Shouldn't masters take all? See, I, I, I used to catch that on social media because the Terry boys were against beer this time, the two biggest beer drivers ever. And I said, I voted against the orders because they had a regulation on the fee, it wasn't.
Obviously, there are some people that view the access to alcohol as a quality of life issue. Uh, and there are, with that mindset, what is wrong with restricting the fee to progress the trail system? What do you think about that, Tim?
But I, I just think the money should go to the city because if, once you get this thing going, it's gonna be a whole bunch of tax dollars. And limiting it to a certain deal or restricting the funding, I don't think it's all a good idea.
Now, the tax dollars still go to the city, you're talking about the fees for the applications.
I'm talking about all, all the proceeds off of this ordinance go to progress the trails.
The application fees?
All the proceeds. Taxes included, taxes included.
I agree with Tim, I don't, I think we're too early in the game to restrict. You don't know what you don't know right now.
So it's not an A and P deal, I mean, that, probably that money should go to A and P before it goes in trails, so that's kind of restaurant, hotel deal.
A and P still gets our share.
Right. So that's why I don't, why, and that's.
I mean, the council could come in on the back end of this, like we have done and said, we're gonna allocate the, the county sales tax. Boom, 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 whatever percentage of it, we can come back later and say, we're gonna allocate all fees or taxes from this to a specific thing. But I don't, I think it's too early, you can't even know that.
Well, that's what happened last night.
I mean, I don't think you're gonna get all the millions that Tim thinks you're getting.
This, this is a few thousand dollars.
Well, I think you're, uh, if I'm a long story, I think, well, I think the biggest money is keeping, I don't say there's not gonna be a lot of money making with tax, but I think the biggest money is people staying and eating at a restaurant. You can't get in, that people not, that's true.
What is, if your rights only be a couple thousand dollars, there's nobody's gonna apply because it's so restricted. And they're the old, I mean, it's been, we've had it on the books for what, six, seven years now?
Since seventeen.
I have a bigger problem with ABC, not a ton about.
It's not with ABC because they can't, they're always thinking of the pros and the cons to us.
I think a thousand feet was very restrictive, but a four hundred feet is not.
To have the ABC application, or then with this.
I agree with that, a thousand, a thousand feet, I think it definitely.
I can assure you, no one has with ABC first before they approached us to try to get alcohol, unless.
They have to have the ordinance in there before they go down. I don't know how we get them to rail, ABC rated licenses, because it's pretty high much here.
Same, if I may, man, hundred, would you, I can see it, but, I, and I, you and I looked at it really close, would you go from one end to the other and tell us? Do that involve, or do that, or what, what, what recurrent restaurants, if you will?
At, at, right now, where you're right now?
Yeah, at four hundred.
Four hundred?
Well, yeah, go ahead and do the thousand, it takes everybody, you can kind of see it takes everybody.
Right now, you've got Lynn's Garden.
Yeah, Lynn's.
There's, there's no other restaurants in town.
Which we do.
Have the capability.
So if you, if you go to four hundred, what do you get?
I'm not quite sure if you get Oaklunkay, the sign's covering it, but I think it's really close. Uh, Oaklunkay would be opened up. Everything from the police station all the way to Lafayette, which is, there's only Dairy, Lynn's Garden.
The Caboose.
Lynn's House.
We'll stop off if somebody wants for a little, Rusty's.
Rusty's Tacos and Beer.
You've got.
Storecraft would open up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For distribution.
That's the brewery.
It's like microbrew. I think that's the dogs, Waffle House could have it. It still doesn't open it up to a whole lot, it's still pretty restrictive, but I mean, you open up a lot, you had the previous thing.
There is a gentleman, I use that word, it looks weak, I won't tell you who he is, no kidding, he's a good guy, he does, he does his own brewery, he has set for, ever since I've been in office. And he knows, he said, nothing gonna happen, so, but I'll tell you anyway, if you ever got to square or the, I'd rent one of those buildings in the art space.
Squares, when I was thinking about for the district, Newbury opening up out of K. And the Newbury opening up out of K, I'm talking about Waffle. So.
About the same, yeah, with all this, uh, it's still, the, uh, the square, it's still knocked out, really.
Yeah, it's.
He could buy it out of the way.
Unless he's talking for twenty six.
Y'all down there, if I, if I placed in district, what do y'all think about the districts? If I had, if, you know, the square was made into a district, what do y'all think about that?
If you, if you want the place to get, have alcohol in, to have alcohol, if you know.
I know you're at Seerut.
I'm leaving Seerut, I know it's state law for private clubs.
What, what do y'all think about the district, I have districts in, in there and amendments?
I can bless the four hundred, just for full disclosure, because I will then get something, I hate all this.
So you're.
Look at your, look at your Highway ten corridor, by the way, we're talking about widening. And that we've said for many years, we wanted to develop that Highway ten corridor.
Yeah.
Look at where you are right now, I mean, you got a pretty big open spot.
This is technically not supposed to be here, this is not in city limits, it's just there for generalized purposes.
The senior assistant center is the point of your circle.
No, it'll be out in Valley View Church Plaza, it's just south of senior center.
It's an interesting thing to think about.
I guess, one thing about, I say, I guess, like I entertainment district, you know, on the square, I'm just thinking, okay, if you made that square that way, then somebody could say, well, I'm opening up the restaurant, you know, uh. This is a month before the July fourth and, uh, yeah, why don't you buy a taco, you can buy, you know, beer and walk around July, July fourth.
But ABC's still.
ABC is going to regulate that walking around.
ABC's gonna regulate it all?
They're gonna regulate, I mean, you can't, I mean, you can't say, Rusty Carver, I sell tacos.
You're just, you're just. You're able to walk around.
You're just, you're just, you're able to walk around the ordinance. Yeah, I thought they never listed this, you were able to walk around with it.
On private. I, I believe that's private.
I don't know, maybe right, I was like, did you walk around anywhere, the sidewalks and years are not private.
Yeah, like, damn, here in Main Street, is that the entertainment district? Bayberry Main.
Bob, you needed to say something a while ago.
Well, yeah, I'm just gonna address that, there are, I think we've done three there, in Bayberry, and they've done sections, and they've awarded some sections, both of them down in that area. What I was gonna say to Rod was, you know, it doesn't make, what you know, it's who you know, and you remember when y'all set up at ABC Bridge, that tall blonde lady came over and worked on it? And, and helped us with it? She's now probably the expert on entertainment districts and private clubs.
That's your wife?
Yeah, my wife. I'm volunteering her, or at least, and I had been involved in a lot of that, and I'm volunteering her to help with some of that process.
Well, then I won't call her, because I had, I, I kind of fruit them out over at the municipal league, they think I'm kind of off.
Yeah.
It's some period, let me call her. Hey, so amending the venue's product, Arkansas venue's products with the student group, you don't have a problem with that? And when I say I'm gonna amend it, I'm gonna amend it where it's totally exempt from the ordinance, I mean, it's exempt from the fees and everything.
Yeah.
That, that's probably to promote something like what Doug was talking about, the guy that Doug's talking.
Yeah. He is still studying the taxes. My best product. Yeah. He's, it's just exempt from the four hundred foot regulation.
I mean, if you sell wine, it's like taxes, right?
Yes, you're exempt from other things.
How come you only asked them about it?
I, I know what he's concerned with. I'm sitting down here, I'm, I'm listening to him grab it.
Well, let's see, that's sort of the highway cut tax.
I, I just don't wanna waste my time on a district or, or, you know, some of this other stuff, because some of it's hard questions. I know where, I know where Tim's at, he wants zero, and he wants total access, access to alcohol. Y'all down there seem a little bit more in tune with me.
Also want ten, five percent of the tax number, too.
Yeah, he wants to lower the tax numbers, and he's the only one grabbing about the tax, even the people that are hunting it are like, hey, I just want to be over.
We're about to buy it. They're selling it to the idiots that are gonna pay a whole lot because they have to charge a damn price.
Okay, I see, it's a person.
I'm not gonna tell them to bear either, but I'm just saying, that, I'm not sure if you ever been to a bar, Rob, but the expenses and the taxes get gone into the consumer. Just like this, you can't all better know right now.
Convenience fee.
Here's a convenience.
She's not asking that.
She didn't tax us. I mean, I understand that. You regulate a lot, so it never happens, so why are we talking about it? I mean, it hasn't happened yet, no one even tried about doing it until it last month.
Well, one part, and.
And two, very good. So, where does that little mini law have all those?
On the hard questions, I'm working Travis, make sure it's, okay, legally.
It's still out, where, where is the, it's still out.
It, it's gonna take some time, I'll go through three, four readings, and it, it might get tabled, but let's make sure it's right. I do want to answer, I do want a definitive answer on the food court deal, because I think it will come up. I think, I think the one, I think some of them that'll happen in the future will be successful, and somebody's gonna pop up and say, hey, can I, I always think, can I private for private club license for this area right here?
If you made a food court an entertainment, an entertainment district, that doesn't change anything about the rest of the ride. Oh, what, I don't even understand what the entertainment district does, it just lets you walk around.
You're not gonna find the one place.
What?
You're not gonna find the one place.
And I'd say, to me, I'd make a food court an entertainment district.
Well, because if we made a food court, Terry Smith's food court, she's built out there, if we made that an entertainment district, that doesn't mean the L and J trader that's going in there to sell beer, he's still gotta go through all the hoops and.
Right.
That's what I understand.
And, and you still have to have a restaurant that sells more food than alcohol.
Yeah, it's a very important part, you gotta sell more food than you sell, sell alcohol.
Right. Is that dollar?
I mean, that.
It's a percentage of yourself.
It's a percentage, a big percentage, you have to sell a lot more food than you do alcohol. And you can't advertise it, you can't have distributors bring it in town, it's gotta come in in unmarked cars and all kinds of stuff. That, that's not us, that's ABC.
Have you looked at all the ABC regulations?
Been looking through that, I have the, you know, stays up here, all the fees and everything, why you have to go through to be able to apply for it, to get approved. Like we say, you have to go through y'all first, so if we don't get nothing through here, then there's no point of going through.
Does ABC make you, I just, I don't know, I just don't understand. Does ABC, assuming all this, what's all that, do they make you section off, a section of your restaurant?
No.
In a private club?
No, it is not.
So the whole restaurant is a private club?
Yes.
It's one designated park.
Yes.
Do you know, have you read from ABC, you have your outdoor area?
We have the patio, but we are not gonna do anything out there, everything is gonna be inside.
But would ABC allow you to use that patio outside?
Well, here's the thing, if you do, you will have to cover the whole thing up, make it like the restaurant, like, what it looks inside, it'll have to look outside, cover up and everything, and we don't want it.
You have to enclose it.
Yes.
You want it to be a private club, or?
Private club, you have to hide it.
Because, you know, and in Fort Smith, you know, you got Friday, that you can be outside and move dogs and all that, I don't know. It doesn't, private club.
Private club, say, you have to pretend you're not selling alcohol.
Well, that's, I mean, that's what I don't understand, is how you do it in the entire restaurant then.
From the outside.
Oh.
Yeah.
But you don't have, this again, that's just my ignorance, uh, do people have to be members of the private club? I mean, when they first started that, you had to have a membership.
They have to.
Of course, it was a goofy deal, you know, you pay a dollar to be a member or whatever.
They didn't win with that.
So like you said.
That the people are bypassed on anyway.
Yeah, I mean.
There's a voucher for, you know. You ain't had wind with it.
You really don't, it doesn't have to be one.
Just private club. For, uh, look at how it's kind of done, I know it's not kind of radical, I guess, but the La Huerta in Bayberry, Golden Millard Bridge in the Bayberry, there's a La Huerta down there on the, it'd be the left if you're going east. They have alcohol, they have that little bar area, I think, have it quarantined off.
Yes.
But they are in the same kind of hospice as we are, because they're not with it in Bayberry.
Nope, that, that will hurt to this private club.
Yes, but you don't have to sign anything or be a member, you just go to eat, just like we do at our place.
Because they didn't win with that.
And basically, she's kind of do what they do without the bar situation, where you can just barely, like you're cheating, we're talking about, that's the month. These are gonna be waiting this way, just wondering, ten, ten in the morning, drink all day, you know, there is, there's a regulation on that, too, I think, as far as how many drinks you can have.
That's regulated, I've read that.
That's what they're getting trained on. But if, if it's local and you have a chance to go kind of see what's happened, how it works, in a place that's selling alcohol instead of dry county.
You, you don't have to, target your application into a question, you're filling out for your number, Daniel, because that don't happen, oh, that's, okay, that's a problem, nevermind. I'm trying to wake her up.
No, just for, the four hundred, I can work it, I, I don't have any problem with that, because I get, it's gonna give us a couple of restaurants to offer, but I mean, you're gonna be able to do it.
Well, I'm gonna bring back these amendments, I, I should have a better answer when I come back, I'll work with Travis on the food court deal. And I'll call Merrill, I'm gonna call you, if, if you live with him.
Some of it runs off.
Why don't, why don't, why don't we get to the last one?
Sounds actually good.
All right, good discussions, anybody else on this particular topic? Uh, we are, uh.
She said.
You kind of know what you need to know, or?
I don't know if she got an answer, she won't hear it.
I would like for you to believe, I don't want you to believe that, that's all right, I want you to understand, I think that, not that you don't, but they're working on it.
That's, that's what I'm, my understanding, we're working on.
And you already heard some.
It's not something that's just left out there.
Yeah.
We're working on it.
Next month, we should have something to be writing, the, the lease, the, the ordinance currently, and what changes are gonna be hopefully put, made and requested, I'm just, I'm, I will say, he's sparing the deal.
Well, the biggest, yeah, the biggest one is the, you know, the, is the footage, the four hundred foot, without that.
Right.
Without amending just that, you're.
Yeah.
You're not able to apply.
She has to have the variants.
You have, yeah.
She is a supplier, but she has to have variants from the council.
I will, I will have the distance in there, and I will, it seems positive, adding the venue's, Arkansas venue's products, adding other parts that I'd like to add, that seems positive, so that'll be in there, and then I'll, I'll, I'll have a couple of other things that I'll answer the food court deal. But it's a three-month process.
So you said between August and September? Now, it's definitely yes, sir. Yes or no?
Depending on how it's passed, it's probably a September deal.
Just when you, when y'all get to the, the comments.
The layup ordinance reads, we can give her approval right now.
I agree with Daniel, I want you, once you do it, it's, you know, it's, I'm, I'm not, I'm not fully able to do it right now, I want to go through the process.
We're into this one, we're reading, it's a whole bunch of.
Just as you can.
You didn't like that process?
Variants are terrible.
I wouldn't.
It's not a variance, wait, just give her approval.
I mean, that's anyone, I mean, I guess that's a standard variance.
You can give her approval to apply?
No permit being issued, it is less than a thousand feet from all the stuff we've been talking about, Lindsay Lynn's, without prior approval from the city council.
He's reading L.
L.
You're saying to approve the, the distance change.
Yeah.
Therefore allowing.
Right, so I'm saying, she can be approved right now, so go ahead and apply, and then, if that don't be her fault, we'll. I understand, we went over this three months and, we'll have a hundred and something names and legislative sessions and whatever, I mean, if our head ordinance said we could do it, I'm absolutely against it, that's all right.
Travis, are you saying that we could?
Y'all, I didn't, don't be.
What you read, that's we could grant her.
Uh, she could be granted the permit within the thousand feet with the council's approval, is what I heard.
Yes, sir.
It still has to have an ordinance from the council that allows her to apply for a permit.
That's right.
It would be my suggestion, that we work along with what Rod's doing. We, we got a little sample ordinance, just a couple of few lines, it just says, so it's open to apply for, for a permit, fill in vice. Put that on first reading, same time you put the provision to the county director ordinance on first reading. It's gonna take three months to get her done, but it can be done concurrently while we're doing revision. So at the end, otherwise it takes six months.
Yeah, to get done with.
She had to have an ordinance.
She has to do the three.
Specific ordinance for her to apply for permit, so put both of them on first reading, eight months, then they run concurrently, and when revisions are done, she go. Does that make sense, Travis?
Yes, sir. It makes sense.
Application has to be adopted by, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, see, the, the ABC requires an ordinance from the city council, allowing her to, like, go specific to each.
That makes, that makes sense, and it also allows, I think we all know, we're gonna have some votes come. If you do it, and I must, I'm not saying you're wrong, but if you did it tonight, you're not allowing the public to.
She also doesn't, I completely, actually.
Okay, sorry.
But, uh, I know we're gonna bring back.
Okay, so we're clear, you're feeling pretty good, and, um. All right, Department reports questions from council, there they are, a couple of them, a few of those that are still waiting.
Yeah.
Any questions, council, Department is? Yes, sir, I'm sorry, yeah.
Uh, Buddy had, Buddy had leave twenty-third of June at two thirty, they will have the official review, tell you, call East Village, you'll, you're not sure you all get invitation, but you're all officially invited.
What's that?
If you're five hours coming up now, I believe, is that right, Sonny?
He told guys earlier, it's three, I think.
Good, like six, yeah.
Sorry. I think it's three, right?
Ten thirty. I think, I think Buddy's got two.
Oh, okay, to approve, okay, go.
Anyway, twenty-third, two-thirty.
Two-thirty.
Official review.
Two, three, two? Probably not two-thirty.
Uh, I told Buddy that had the food up there, they went about a couple, I think, Paul, Buddy told me to call. I didn't know Buddy two-thirty.
Maybe he didn't really want to call to see who.
Don't worry, get there one.
So, anything else, or anything from these department units, or?
Oh.
Sidewalks.
Yes, sir, you're gonna jinx it.
I'm not gonna do it, sidewalk should be finished this week.
Yeah.
Our solar plant was turned on last Friday, they're doing some monitor stuff, and so we should have.
So we got both rays up around in sidewalks, like you said, all concrete before, and I think they got fixed the railing on the church side, maybe here or there.
Yeah, they, they have just a few workers right there.
It looks good.
In phase one, sorry, face two, Jerry Shores has assured me that he is working on those easements to get to us, and then Daniel, our easement, that's where.
No, no, Hunter, I passed the torch.
Hunter volunteered those because they're probably gonna be easier, Hunter.
Wow.
Hunter got them lined up, ready to shoot them.
Said the railings look good.
Yeah, I love the railings, it has been suggested by a certain person in the room that we might consider, as we did out on Ridge Crest, putting greenwood along those, those, those railings out there, that looks nice, remember those? That'll be cool.
It's already a couple of junk entlovers in there.
Yeah, I mean, if you have to, I'll give you the spelling.
Okay. Jeremy have the, does he have the construction drawings done yet?
Yes, he had, he asked, well, he had, we have that, I would call it a very preliminary part of it, uh, back when we did phase one, he did one, two, and three all at the same time.
It's a project, it's a full project drawing.
Yeah, so he, he shouldn't.
Can, can you bring phase two in here next meeting, and just kind of see what we're looking at?
Where, and that's, yeah, I wouldn't say he's got necessarily cross-sections of, what, what I do not, what I know he hasn't done, that I'm aware of, my son he knows, or you know, like, going across the bridge, going inside the bridge.
No, I haven't seen, I haven't seen any construction drawings, rod, we'll see what we can come up with.
He's got a route with this.
Route is what I was concerned, yeah, not the details.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll see what we come up with.
Okay.
Speaking of tech, Ruth.
Yes, sir.
Um, and I know you're gonna hate this, but every day I drive by, and I think, I don't want them to play those knee bushes around.
I'm gonna talk about here.
Yeah, I don't, we talked about doing it, you were cutting for, but just some other cause, or something else they gotta bother, and I don't like it that bad.
No, I think it looks nice, I, I've done the same thing, because I, I, I try to imagine what it would look like, uh, I, I tend to black some landscaping underneath the flagpole, wherever they are.
Right.
Uh, but, but it's okay, the labor's free, as you know, the cost.
I'd say a mulch bed or something, but I don't know if it's gonna be bushes or a haze.
But would be, no, my, my idea was to do very low profile, and that's fine, I mean, I, I don't care for it if you guys want it, I would think very, very low profile stuff, uh, and, and, this is Richard and Richard's grandson, who is.
Shane.
Shane, and us out there talking about it, and, and this is, there's suggestions that you know.
It's his part, because we go still.
Yeah, that's, that's part of it, so the labor's free, but the, obviously, the maintenance and the labor would not be free, uh, what I'm trying to say, the blocks, he was thinking, they were, they drew it out as they all do all, he was got projects, right? And drew up one or two in the front, and maybe one. He drew up one or two on the front, and maybe one more on the back, whatever that front was, just, just to give it some, but, but it's still like.
Well, I mean, if it's for an Eagle Scout deal, I guess.
It is to finish it out.
I just, I, I keep thinking about, about signs where have trimmed it every day, and I get why they can't read it, cause the stupid shrubs, like.
I planted those shrubs, thank you very much.
I know.
You know, being a park director, gets called by me once, or he ain't us, doesn't he?
Well, I used to call, say, who's in charge, the, the chamber or park, something.
It doesn't take much growth, it's all to block, you know.
And I know it's not gonna be blocking the flag, it went in there, but just something gotta be trimmed, and gotta stay pretty, and.
Yeah, I, I would think some really low profile stuff, the best.
Yeah, I mean, landscaping, I appreciate the, the trees on the square, being repaid, and Casey did say, Mary, that you picked up, picked up trees.
I did, well, yeah, you're right, and I, I just went along with it, so we're trying desperately, I'm trying hard to keep the Japanese, or the, uh,
Yoshinah.
Yoshinah cherries living. Now, we've replaced the ones that you got new, or replacing still Yoshinah cherries, Greg Cave, who is, uh, above the, or, according to Dave, if you're, bringing you, he's not a big fan, he don't, he doesn't think those are the best. And they're not your typical land, or a street state trees. Uh, and I'm not looking at you, Rob.
Be careful, be careful now, that tree work was, boy.
But, but the tree board, the tree board, minus Rod.
Loves them.
Loves the idea of some color, and, and I know it's never gonna be Washington DC, but that's my hope. So I'm scattering them around. Until, exactly, well, and hence, the, the, we got, we got, Casey knows it, he's working on it, I'm gonna, if he doesn't get it, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna. We used to have watering bags for all, they're called gator bags, and I don't know where they went to, but we need to get those and all, bring the trees ASAP. But that was the idea, is get that, that water.
Is that irrigation in the square?
In the square, yes, we're talking, he's still in front of us often.
Oh.
On the side of it, yeah.
Uh, irrigation, I guess we got maple out there on the, uh, trail, uh, the car wash, you know, and I think it's gonna make it, like, it's a good looking tree right now.
Where at now?
It's just.
That's the hill of car.
On the west side of the car wash.
Oh, okay, oh, yes. Now, that, that water bag, I'm saying that's because of three of those irrigation bags, whatever.
That's a short area.
We have lost, we have lost, and you warned us, I appreciate the warning, here we are, I mean, like, your lady from, has lost probably five big maple trees.
It's a bad place, I mean, they, they have, they have, their, their bark is real thin, it just doesn't take a real high heat, I mean, there's, there's too much western heat, they're, they're almost a parasitic tree, they need kind of, kind of be shaved.
Plus, it's, it's all around.
It's just, it's just a bad place.
So we lost a few though.
What?
Hey, you know what, I can leave back here and talk all night long.
We're talking about drinking.
All right, somebody else brought it up, anybody else on anything? I have one thing, and I want to say, to, to just to bring to your attention, I'm not asking for a vote, I'm not asking for a discussion at all, I just want you to know that I've been, and requested of me to bring to your attention, and then, and you may be real, I, I think some of, anyway, the horrible, horrible accident that occurred on Houston Street last week, or whatever, has been asking me by three different property owners, to receive that truck in their yard, to possibly consider anything the city might consider about just blocking, putting something on the road that would prevent that from ever happening again.
What area?
Barrier. On those very steep driveways across the street from Cape Town, look at it, worst case scenario, steep in the city, you don't know it. A man was working on his vehicle, on, on the transmission, had it in neutral, chalked it with what I understand was not much, chalking the wheels. He was under it, it rolled under it, over him, killing him. The truck went across Houston, went through the ditch, ended up busting Roy, Troy Bonner's privacy stance, ending up in Larry Stample's backyard. So it traveled, but could distance the concern from these residents, particularly Mr. Bonner, he's the house with the very height, cause you can see everything, in his backyard, the pool, the decking and all that. His kids were outside in the pool, one was fixing to get on the tramp, trampoline, which was literally right beside the truck when, when it landed. So, it's just, they're asking if we could look at that and possibly come up with a barrier.
Some white lich trees.
Well, and that may be the, that may be the trick, I mean, to make it, and, and they're, you know, they wanted to look nice, they, I, I've only talked to Mr. Bonner, Larry has called me, and Ron Key has passed it through Mr. Bonner, that he's, Ron Key, not Ron Key, Ron Lewis, I'm sorry. Lives there too, but anyway, I just wanted to tell you, because I promised him I was gonna share it with you, it was horrible, horrible incident, hopefully one of those one in a billion times. I can't imagine living on that hillside in those, on those driveways, if you're not familiar, it's mostly over, but anyway, so, there's that. I don't want to end on that note, anybody got anything else? I will, I will talk to our street director, look at our driveway, see what is possible, maybe there's a tree, I really been thinking of.
Trees, the forest, trees.
Post oak.
You're a black dragon.
Maybe you're looking something. Anyway, anybody got anything else?
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
We have.
Okay. I told you I liked it.
All right. All right, done.
I've got, check the safe noon, I've got forty feet.